Sir, the movement bring this relief you have given us to this meeting. We ask that you be with us who are sick, those who are hurting from loss, grant them healing and compassion during a difficult time. We ask that you be with our students, teachers, and school personnel as we start another year with many unknowns and hurdles to climb. Lead and protect them in school, at home, and in their families. Open our minds to the past at hand, our ears to each other, and our hearts to grow with.
Amen.
Number three, approval of our minutes, consider approval of July 13, 2020 regular, July 14, 2020 adjourned, a closed session minutes. So, motion by Councilmember Hamilton, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All of us, the voters say aye. That's the topic, let's carry on. I have no duty to address it unless someone else has one. Moving on to announced allegations, Dr. Eric Johnson, candidate for living loss. Keep on up the phone.
Thank you.
Will you hear it, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
A little unusual, Rob, man, the way you were doing it.
No, okay. It was a Tom Jones song, right? It's not unusual. Anyway, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. I invited myself, but thank you very much. My name is Eric Johnson, J O H N S E N, Danish spelling. I am a District Five candidate at the City of Elmo from County Mission, running unaffiliated. To get on the ballot, I had to get 2,000 signatures, and I had some dear friends who helped me get those signatures. I've never voted a straight ticket in my life, and so I felt myself to be unaffiliated always voting for the person. I have no agenda, I have no axe to grind, I support no special interests, and I know it sounds corny, but I believe in truth, justice, the American way, and honesty, diligence, and trustworthiness. I'm a retired family doctor, as of two years ago, and I'm looking around to see some of my patients there. I can't say former patients, but you're still in my heart. As a physician, I practice in my office, I practice at the hospital, the nursing home, at the Dr. Pfeiffer College for 25 years, and I had a very, very full practice. I enjoyed it. Finally. Then now I'm a war veteran, I was squad leader in automatic weapons in 1970 in Vietnam. Taught me a lot about leadership and how to take responsibility. I'm a lifelong Methodist, and rightly with Central Church, we share the same parking lot here. So, as a physician, a veteran, and a Christian, I say if people don't like those three qualities, then I'm not a good candidate. So, a lot of things that I've done, I was the first medical director of the hospice here, served on the YMCA board, proud to say all three of my boys are drafted to Stanley County Schools, I coach a lot of youth sports, soccer, basketball, baseball. My wife is a tutor at the Stanley County Schools, she was on the habitat board for many years. I've been a rotarian for 16 years, and my wife and I were in Dancing with the Stars, which we should have won had the judge has been a little, a little fair. Anyway, just to wrap things up, some things I've held with me, my grandmother, Hattie Merriman, taught me that it takes no talent to complain, and anybody can complain. Try to identify a problem and solve it, don't place blame and solve problems. And JFK said, "That's not what your country can do for you or what you can do for your country." Now, I moved here to Elmo, Stanley County. We obviously love it here, and I hope that I can pay back some of the wonderful things you've bestowed on. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to field them, otherwise, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I have no announced allegations, we will move on into administrative reports. Number five, Anthea, local city engineer in discussion of D B concrete repairs at U.S. Highway 821.
Good evening, Mayor and the members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I've got a few slides to go over in really no particular order, the first of which is, touches on, let's see if this thing works. Oh, yeah. The first of which touches on a project that the books have been closed on for a couple of years, but it's resulted, or the result of some challenges that were experienced during construction, some issues that the contractor had, the subcontractor had during construction, and we've been studying this for a couple of years, and we kind of worked our way into the proposed resolution. And so, it's going to require some additional city funds, and so what we're here to talk about tonight is educate council on what we have found, educate council on what's being done on the solid subcontractors' dump, and then what's outside their scope. And I believe the request is going to be for either tonight or a later date of budget amendment to cover these funds. But I'll run through these, and what I really want to do is answer your questions, to talk to you about what we found, and what the planned resolution is, and then we'll go over there. So, if you recall, this has gone by many years, about 2016, 15, 16, a very small part of your $12 million rehabilitation of the 52 was repairing some of the concrete out on the sedentation deck. And this picture on the right, this picture on the right is a really shot, or start of the lab is a good shot for wrestling with a harbor there. There were several places on the outside where the concrete was clearly in disrepair and was approaching failure. And I should ask, does everyone have a copy? I think I'll leave one on the desk. So, if you'd rather follow here, you can. And so, what we're doing in this project is chipping out this concrete down to a solid substrate, and the specified method of repair was to come back with plain concrete, reform, reboard, reinforcement added to repair this. So, as we got into the job, and the subcontractor that the general contractor had selected to help was a company called Crom. Crom has been around for many decades, and very sophisticated and knowledgeable concrete repair organization and concrete construction group. But they selected to use a method of repair that was a little different than what we had specified, and we reviewed it and ended up through it. And because we felt it was going to meet the requirements of the product, we now know, we didn't know at the time, but we now know that the use of how they installed that product was not in alignment with the manufacturer's recommendations, and we now know, and they have admitted as much, that a lot of what you're seeing up there with the heaving of the concrete, I'm not sure how many of you have seen it, but I'll show you a picture in a minute, is because they didn't apply it correctly, they didn't mix it correctly, they didn't write, they didn't add aggregate like they should have, and we now know that this was caused a lot of the observations that were seen. And so, the bulk of the repairs of their Crom is going to repair on their dump, and they're planning to get started on this in the next couple of weeks. And I'll just give you a couple of shots, so if you kind of look on the right, all of this concrete looks the same because it was painted after the fact. It was heaving up the top there is what was added as part of the repair. And this is prevalent, not just, and this is a couple dozen places, some are big, some are large on the basin, that they're going to remove this and come back with the corrected action.
Before you move on, can we do the identification, remove? Were you tipping out, or were you taking it all the way down?
In these areas, in the bulk of the areas, we are not taking it all the way down. We are with precision and with care removing what's there, and there's a process that we have specified for doing that, and then reforming and reboarding. So, let's say, it varies, how much they remove varies from place to place, but the intention is they'll remove what they put down, get down to the solid concrete below, and then reboard you on top. And this is just the top deck, not the walls.
And these are repairs completed within solid area?
There is, yeah.
Yeah, just to underline several things, because we had not sent in until we get this. So, I'm listening to you. What we went out for bid was, and what we gave to the contractor, we didn't end up, they did not end up applying what they did on, is that correct?
They used a product that was a little bit different from what the construction drawings specified, which is, so, yes, yes.
So, yes and no, they did not actually come through with what they said they were going to, what they did upon, what was did upon?
Yes, that's accurate, yes.
And then we agreed to let them do something different, is that right? Or the contractor did?
We did, and the way these contract documents are structured, us agreeing to allow them to use a substitute product does not relieve them of
Liability.
Meeting the requirements of the contract office.
Right. Of which they had now acknowledged.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Good evening.
So, areas like this are where they are going to remove what they put down and come back with something new, or come back with new concrete, the way that we had specified originally. There are, however, we now know, we didn't know at the time, and we've been studying this for, that's the better part, a couple of years. We now know that as we were testing this and as we were evaluating, there were certain areas where we removed, in order to evaluate what was below, we removed what they put down, we being Crom's group. And we got back down to areas where you could see the old concrete, and there were some areas where the old concrete that was poured in 1949 was clearly in bad shape, and it wasn't, it was not, we all understood it. We've been arguing for a couple of years about what caused it, but we all knew that that concrete could not stay, right? This concrete is not, its useful life is past. So, the bottom below there, early on, and our structural engineering team was, engineering team was the one that they kind of led the way on this, we were of the opinion that the poor grade of the old concrete that we were observing was because of their incorrect usage. And I can get into the technical part of that, I don't need to, but basically what they did caused the degradation of what was below. So, and this is an, I'll come back, this is an example of what I was saying. We had, in these areas, we had removed the, what was applied, used down to the old, and this is a good example of areas where the old is not of sufficient strength to remain in service. So, Mayor, this is an example of where all of this top deck is going to have to come out and be reformed and reformed with the new structure. Not the whole length, but just a section, this particular picture is about 16 feet wide, 16 feet long, and you see how wide it is. And you can see here, picture where we were taking cores as part of the analysis.
So, Adam's contract agent?
Yes.
If I may, Mayor. So, had we not deviated from what we sent out on the original contract, had we not deviated and let them do their way, would we be sitting here today? Because you're working for us.
Absolutely.
You're working for us right now.
Yeah.
Would we be sitting here had we not allowed that to happen?
We feel, and our structural team feels very confident, that if we had not deviated from what the contract document showed, most of what we see out there, we would not see. We don't, it's not real clear on these areas where the old concrete is in such bad shape, it's hard to say with certainty, either way. In other words, we don't know, we couldn't have fixed it exactly the way we showed it in the documents, and it would be fine, or we couldn't have fixed it and this old below would not have held up. And it's just in that gray area of technical evaluation that I can't give you a good answer on that.
And the 16th of things beyond that, is that old here?
Well, the whole, you can kind of see a seam right here, that's somewhat of the line that's been a little bit new. And I'll answer, Ms. Hall, real quick, Mayor, real quick. Areas like this, we feel certain that if we had, if the specified product or specified method had been used, that we would not see this. But it's areas like this where we know the old concrete's in rough shape now, that we, it's hard for us to answer that.
Mr. Mayor, I, the way I seem like deja vu all over again, seem like we've sat here and don't do this before, and we allocated a great deal of money from the contingency funds.
That was actually inside basins.
So, we did that concrete. I don't get it.
Two different areas, Mr. Wilson. The other was the inside basins we had to redo. But it's two different problems.
Well, it's the same, it's the same project, it's the same general contractor. The subcontractor that did this work had nothing to do with what was going on inside the building, they were not.
I thought this project was all done way up the road.
Just a quick question, that concrete, that you have a picture of right there is obviously visually inspect.
Yes.
So, if the old concrete had all put their material down, did it look like that?
So, that's part of the discussion, and the answer is no, it did not. So, it didn't look as bad, in fact, and I don't have the exact depth, but this is an eight-inch slab, and you can see about four inches of the ledge, and then four inches of old concrete left. So, when they shipped away what was bad initially, they only took a couple of inches away, and everyone felt like what was below was good enough to stay in service, and then they would come back with this repaired. We now are seeing things that look worse below than we saw the first time, and that was why, as we talked with our structural team, who has a lot of experience with this alternative use, and we now know that they used it incorrectly, that that use could have caused this. May I continue? Yeah, sorry, is that, yeah, sorry, I don't know if I answered your question, is that?
You did, but I guess my question was going to be probably tell it ahead, but how much of that old concrete is still on walls and the whole frame around the pits? And is the local council in five years or whatever going to have to come back with some major repairs at that point?
Can I answer that in a minute?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, good question. Would you?
I don't want to hit that concrete, but how much of that are they going to replace?
In this particular section, the full width of what you see, so this is a vertical wall right here, and it's the same vertical wall on the other side, below the seam. So, you have about four inches thick of concrete there, and the whole width will come out.
Did it have a joint there to start with?
I'm sorry, say it one more time?
Did it have a joint there to start with?
It had a joint, on the right side it had a joint, and then there was not a joint on this part of the picture, there was a joint at the habit between basins four and five. Any mention of it?
When you said that, approximately.
Beneath that, this one. Beneath this is a trough that carries your raw water and distributes it to the sedentation bases.
Okay.
So, in order, our first opinion was the incorrect usage of the material caused this, which has happened before, and we learned about this. Of course, Crom said, "We're not so sure." So, we hired a team to come in in early 2019 and pull five different cores and have them send off for our own analysis. Crom had taken cores, now we want to take our own cores so that we can come to you with our own analysis. And there was a smoking gun relative to a couple of the cases in this particular area is one of them. Without really any discrepancy or any denial, the lab analysis that we did, everyone comes in, petrographic analysis and depth of carbonation analysis, indicated that what's causing what we see right here pre-existed all of our activity at the plant about decades. And I'll get, because I know that's an odd statement to make, so, Mr. Whitley, I'll come back to your question. When we, and I'll fast forward, so, I'll educate you just a little bit on concrete samples. So, when you pour concrete, it's at a high pH, 12 to 13, which is why if you handle concrete a lot without gloves on, then it'll blister you. Over time, and that high pH is a lot of, protects the rebar from rusting, and you put rebar about two or three inches deep, so that over time, as concrete is exposed to air, the pH drops to neutral over time. And generally, as the pH of the concrete reaches neutral near the rebar, that rebar's going to start to rust, and that's what causes concrete to fail. 50 to 75 years is kind of the, for modern concrete design, is kind of what, like this is what we would expect. So, the cores that were sent to the lab, when they were on a rate of carbonation, and they can, and the next slide will show something different, this is just an example, this is not from science, this is an example for educational purposes. The purple paste is, shows the pH of the concrete, so they painted with a paste. If it's purple, it's a high pH. If it doesn't turn purple, it's converged to neutral. Now, I don't know what, over what number of basic purple, I have to come back to you. But you see on the right, examples of cores that have been in service for a long time, and you see at the top, you don't see any purple, and then on the bottom you do, which is a sign that the pH is slowly dropping over time as it's exposed to air. So, what this shows us, as we look at cores of your facility, and the glare's going to be harsh, so let's look here, this is from your plant, and it was from right where the picture I showed you earlier. But this up here is, the reason is crack is just trying to extract that core, you can see how they dipped it in an epoxy to hold it in place. But whenever you see white between the crack and the purple, that means that crack has been there for a long time. The pH along that crack has gotten close to neutral, which means that it is cracked and it has been exposed to air, and that's, over time, moving that pH down. Then you, this is a better example, you can see the scale, see how this is zoomed in, and you see a micro crack here, and you see how, it's not looking, is it? And you see how you have white, and then you have purple. So, this is a pretty telltale sign that these cracks have been here before we started. Now, what that means is, we now know that the work that was done by the subcontractor, not with the manufacturer's recommendations, did not cause the phenomenon that we're seeing up there. It pre-existed all of this. Now, it brought it to light, right? And that's why I said, Mr. Hall, you asked a question, would we have known this? And we don't know, it's hard to say. But for cause of this, there are, the repair, the repair in certain areas, now basins one, two, and three, is going to be outside the scope, a different method, totally different type of construction than what we had originally specified, and that's kind of why we're here As I mentioned in the second bullet, if this had been discovered during construction, we would have said stop, we need to do a change order to repair this code. If we had done, what we're asking for now is a budget amendment, if we had, if we knew what we did, if we knew three years ago what we know now, we would have used project funds to, because there was about $200,000 left over at the end of this project, but we were able to use that to repair the elevator and to put a generator in with me as we were figuring all this out. Now, let me say two things, and one will be Mr. Whitley's question, and then I'll answer any questions that you may have. The, just for a moment, something to be concerned about is, I had a really good thought, just off, sorry, is, something.
Was it the money?
Well, the cost estimate, we had, I know what I was going to say, yes, thank you. So, we figured this out at the end of last year. The report gone by AET was in June of last year, and then we negotiated with Crom back and forth, they reviewed the report, we all came together, and it was early November when Crom said, "Okay, here's what we'll do, here's what needs to be extra." Well, this is not work to be done in the winter months, you don't want to do this kind of concrete work in the winter. So, we kind of said pause, they sent us back a proposal in April, we've been working on it and negotiating with themself, and then we've been meeting with your staff since, I guess, May or June, to kind of go through this and get a game plan, so that's why we're here, two years later, talking about this. So, we, have we known this for a while? Well, yeah, kind of, but not, I mean, this has been a slow process of evaluation of lab testing and back and forth with Crom. Crom has presented an estimate to fix this additional scope work of about $77,000. And so, I think, and I have the guilt to Michael on this, that the request is to authorize them to start, and then come back for a budget amendment based on the final one.
That is correct.
Yeah. And then your question, Mr. Whitley, is a good one. The tests that we did, these tests are very expensive, over $2,000 per core to have done. So, we did not do a comprehensive test of the settlement of the basins. So, we don't know if this is a problem that you should expect to have a budget for in different areas that we, that no one touched during the rehabilitation, or if this is something that will never really show its face. I will say that the industry standard for this is not to do a comprehensive lab analysis and then a large capital project to fix it, the industry standard is really to fix it when it comes up. And it'll manifest itself slowly, so you're not going to have failure, you're not going to have acute failures with something like this, and in general, I mean, these things are known to be fixed as it comes up. So, it is possible that over the next five years, 10, 15, 20 years, you may have some capital expenditure associated with what we found on that last bullet point, is possible. We did not do any of these detailed analyses on the 1960 expansion, all of this was focused on the 1949 concrete. Yeah, sorry. So, that was, that was in my fault, maybe I'll pass it to you for a minute if there's anything you need to add.
Sure. Thanks, Adam. So, what, I guess to sum it up, is that with the situation we have now, Crom has agreed to redo what they have applied incorrectly. What Adam is saying, and we're proposing, and that's why we've had some negotiations for a while, and I've been pretty firm on this, and our staff has felt the same way, that we should not pay for anything that we've already paid for, we should not pay twice, because we hired OKC and others to do the project, and we have paid for that now, supplied incorrectly, that's not on the city. So, where we are is, what's being proposed is Crom would pay for replacement of what they did incorrectly. What the city, what we're proposing for the city to pay is the amount that had it been caught at the time of construction. And they said, "This will not adhere to this concrete because of the existing condition of the concrete existing at the plant, that further work would be needed to repair the concrete that was there," and then a scope change. That's what we're proposing to pay, only what would have been paid at the time had this been noted, because that would have been in addition to the scope of the contract to remove more. So, we're back to that point of, had it been caught at that time, that's what we're proposing that the city be responsible for, nothing more, nothing that we've already paid for, nothing that, you know, should have been done, that was done wrong, wasn't done, this is only what would have been done at the time equal to the amount of a change order, which is why I mentioned in my agenda comments, I think that Adam has said that the anticipated not to, we pay on time, we pay on time in materials, so until they do the work, there's not an exact dollar figure, Adam is anticipating that it would not exceed $77,000, and is hoping it will be a fair amount less than that, but rather propose a high number and coming under than vice versa. And that's why I mentioned where the funds would come from on the city's behalf, is we've got a significant amount in retained earnings in the water and sewer fund, and that's where something of this amount would have to come from.
Adam, how big an area are we talking about? Talk to me in the nature.
Sure.
About around how many bases?
Imagine an area about from me to you, about that wide.
And that's the only area?
Well, that's the only area that we are, that we know we have to fix right now. Yes. It's, I'm not going to say yes for certain, but yes, that's our expectation.
There are other areas Crom is going to fix.
There are other areas, right. There are other areas Crom, there's a lot more than that that Crom is fixing on their own. Now, that may not sound like a lot, it's a little bit complex in how they have to fix it, because your plant is in operation, the trough that is below is in, you know, there's some, there's some intricacies to how they will form and tie rebar and repour the new concrete. But it's not a, it's not a magnanimous amount.
Around how many basins?
Just one.
Just one?
It's, it spans from the edge of, a little bit into basin one, all of basin two, and a little bit into basin three. I'm right about that, I've been on, yeah, okay, yeah.
The logistics here, so, we went a whole fiscal year without spending any money on this, right? Because this one cleaned out, or this, our last, is that right?
I'm going to yield to, I think, I think that's right.
Is that right? Thank you, Judy. So, last year, we hadn't, this hadn't come before us here, 1920.
Correct.
When did, and Judy, I may have to ask you, when did this particular project close out?
Twenty eighteen, I think the last of 2018.
So, so, we, our last, so 2018 would have been eighteen, nineteen, that would have been our last audited year. Is that right? Our last audited year. So, how much is Crom, on this particular piece that you're saying we need to pull out 77 for, what's Crom paying on that part? What's their part, portion of it?
On that particular part?
Just that portion?
Crom is not paying anything for that particular part. Now, they, they have given us fee estimates for the entire job that are around $200,000, that using their own labor or their own workforce. They're, they're going to absorb that. But this particular piece, well, and I should actually rephrase that. Removing what they put down, they're going to do on their own. And repainting, there's a top surface, the, what makes that white in the picture is a paint, they're putting that down on the red color, but that's, that's a small amount of the, of the real complexity of the cost, in this particular area.
So, in this particular area, if our cost is 77, about how much are they pulling? About of that 200,000 would, would go to that 77?
I would estimate in the five to 10 range.
Five to 10?
Correct.
Oh, it's almost nothing.
In a small amount, in this particular?
In that particular area.
Correct, yeah.
What about when you have all the places they're going to replace together?
Their, their number for everything on the entire, what's, including the 77, was right at 200 to do, to do everything.
Including the 77?
Correct, yeah.
So, their portion's only 100 and a quarter then?
Correct.
If we're paying. So, the total project for them is $200,000. And we've got 77 of it, so they're only putting in 125 of it. Is that right? Is that what I just heard?
The math you're doing is correct, yes. I'll add that they are willingly fixing anything that they have agreed they did incorrectly.
Right.
These areas, we now know without any uncertainty that that concrete was bad well before we got there. What they did did not cause it. So, aside from, and frankly, I think, I think that what's fair is fair, and aside from removing what they put down, I'm not sure it would be appropriate to ask them to contribute to this cost. And, and they, they weren't involved in it before, they didn't, what caused this was there's not proper, and I think, yeah, the second bullet there is the real issue, there's not enough air in the concrete. The air mixture, or the air percentage is, is way too low. And I think I mentioned that in my, in my memo, yeah.
So, 200 is all of what we're doing. What would it have cost to do all the basins?
So, if we were to, I mean, that's a really good question. So, the question of why didn't we do this at the start? And why didn't we evaluate all this at the start so we know that? And I can tell you that, that our firm spent almost $15,000 of our, of our resources on the cores, and that was just five cores. So, if you were to do a comprehensive petrographic and depth of carbonation analysis, the cost of that would be well over $100,000 just in the sampling. And then you would have a plan from there. So, I, I don't know how to answer the cost of what it would take if you wanted to redo the entire basin, but it would not really have been, it just wouldn't really been in the budget to do a sample of that magnitude during the design stage of the project.
The other areas that they're repairing, the, 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 or they're repairing, are they taking up what they put down and put back?
Plain concrete.
Plain concrete.
Correct. Well, and then there's some details here, there's a, a surface preparation specification, there's where they're pulling up rebar, we have rebar specifications for how they can connect to the, in, in, in jets, it's plain concrete, correct.
Don't we have concrete structures going back 100, 200, 300 years? I can't help but wonder, if we have buildings and dams and that sort of thing that we put in a couple of hundred years ago, how on earth did we end up with something that went bad on us in 50 years? And, and I don't, you know, I, I'm the chemist, I'm not the concrete thing, but when you start talking about pH of concrete, for the liking, I don't care how that, that relates to anything. That's, I've never heard of that in relation to concrete.
So, the, sorry.
No, that's, that's all right.
The relevance of the pH in this issue is only a part of the testing analysis. So, we can measure the pH of a cross section of a core, and it'll tell us, that has cracks in it, and it'll tell us how old those cracks are. How long have they been there? Are they new or are they old? And if we had gone, this is a picture of, of an actual core from your plant, and this is zoomed up. If this crack was new, if it had been caused by what the activities of the subcontractor, then all of this would have been purple, instead of having the crack in a white stretch or gray stretch and then purple. Same thing with this slide, and I know the coloring's not great, but all of this, you can kind of see the spider web of the cracks that have white and gray. If they were new, all of that would have been purple. So, that's the only relevance of the pH. What caused this, and I don't know why, I don't know how to tell you why it happened or what would have been done differently, but with low air content in the concrete, the concrete is not, it doesn't have the resiliency to free stall. And what happens is over, over a few years, as you go through free stall, free stall cycles, you get these cracks that appear because the concrete's trying to move, and it doesn't have the air content to allow it to move, and these are a lot of, on the micro level, to allow it to move where it wants to.
So, what do we, what do we need tonight? What is, what is our goal tonight from council?
Well, I don't see any particular way around the repairs.
Right.
But, I mean, that is an option, I guess. But, if we're going to make the repairs, what we're looking for is authorization from council to move forward with the repairs, knowing that there's up to $77,000, and those repairs will be made. And it's based on time and materials of the contractor that's hired. Once it's done, we will then have the actual cost. And then what we'll do is come back to council for a budget amendment in the amount of that actual cost. So, the hope would be we come back with a budget amendment after the project is completed, and our share is much less than $77,000, but with the authorization to make the repairs before we even know the exact cost.
Mr. Ferris, I hear what Crom is going to incur from a financial liability standpoint. I hear what we could possibly incur from around $77,000. LKC, from my understanding of what you said, Adam, is that you all have spent around $15,000 from the testing, is that correct?
That, that part is correct, and we've spent another 10 or 15 with our structural team, interacting with them over the last two years. And I, and, sorry, go ahead.
I guess my question to the city manager is, do we as a city feel like the LKC is, should be responsible for, you know, for, for this? Spend a lot of dollars with them and come back after the fact?
Right. And a lot of, I'm sorry, well, yeah, I'll, I feel, that was a lot of the questions I asked, and staff asked, how did this happen, why? Now, obviously, we don't have the technical expertise of LKC, but, you know, we're in positions to, you know, once they're explained, to, to understand and ask those questions to get at, you know, what we believe is a solid answer. So, what LKC has explained to us, and what is what you're seeing tonight, and that's why, you know, if you're putting your faith in a, in a contractor, engineer or otherwise, and you feel that what they're explaining to you is legitimate, that where we've arrived, it is an amount that we would be paying had this been detected at the time of the project. So, that was something that we really tried to work through at the staff level, that we are not paying anything more than what we would have. And Adam has explained why they don't do more core samples, you know, how, how this happened. Again, the core sampling, to make sure this would not have happened, is actually a higher cost than the actual solution. So, we've gone through those measures, you know, I, I feel as comfortable as I can, and I think staff does as well. So, Adam?
And I, we are very thankful for our relationship with Alamooral, and we enjoy working with your staff, I enjoy working with you as a council. Aside from what we have already committed, which is noticeable, about 20-some thousand, which we will not seek reimbursement for, our firm, and we've talked with Michael, we will contribute to this. And it won't be a couple of thousand, it'll be a noticeable number that will come off of your contribution, not someone else's.
After that 77?
Correct, yes.
So, follow up to that, Mayor? So, I hate to be the devil in the detail, but you know, that's what I usually do. So, then, are we act, are we actually, are you suggesting through Michael that this be a $77,000 budget amendment, or is it less than that?
So, what, what I'm suggesting is, we don't know until, we don't have an actual cost until it's complete. 77 is the estimate on the high end, so if council were to approve and authorize the work, when the work is done, there's time, materials totaled up, we will actually know the amount, exact amount of the budget amendment. And of course, then it will be minus what LKC contributes, so hopefully it will be significantly less. But 77 is on the high end of what he thinks the work will cost. Does that answer the question?
It does.
Okay.
I'm just, a little bit fog over this. We closed that project out in 2018?
That's correct.
How do you have a budget amendment after it's already done?
Right, the project budget?
It looks to me like this is just a new project.
Right, right. The project is closed out, so you're 100% correct. Had it been known during the time of the project, we would have used contingency. So, here we are, 2020, the project is closed out. So, if we're going to pay for this, we have to find the money somewhere. This is a water and sewer project, so we will take it, we would utilize water and sewer reserves, not what was in the project reserves.
And I, I just got one other question.
Yes.
The fact that it was closed out two years ago, how on earth did it happen that two years later, this surfaced? I'm just curious about the dynamics of how this would have come out two years later.
I think some of it was showing up early on, so go ahead, Adam.
And that's fine, it's a really good question. We observed phenomenon like this six to nine months after it was applied, not quite that bad, but it, it was showing signs of failure and problems about six, nine months afterwards. And then it got, it got bad fast, and then it slowly got worse over time. And observing how those changes was a lot of part, was a lot of the part of our analysis of what's causing this, right? Is this an acute problem, is this a slow problem? And then frankly, getting concrete cores, getting the lab test, Crom did theirs, we reviewed them, met several times, talked with our structural, and, and then we pulled our own cores, that took about four hunts to get them done, and the results from Minneapolis. Then we met with Crom again, and so that, to answer your question, Dr. Brown, that's a, this has just been a slow analysis over the last two years. But we saw the phenomenon within about six, nine months after the repair was performed.
Which was probably well within the scope then of the opening, the, the project and the budget was actually open?
Correct.
During that time?
Counsel, further comments? Are you ready to?
I move the council give permission to proceed to do this repair, I guess, I don't know how you want to call it, and we'll do the budget adjustment once we know what the cost will be.
Message my captain of duty, move forward with repairs. Thank you.
We're due there.
She made a motion that we move forward with repairs, and we'll do the budget amendment when we get it complete. So, second, my careful, we're willing, further discussion?
With the knowledge that it would not be more than $77,000.
That is the decision. Further comments?
My only comment is, and it has to be simple, but if something like this happened on my property, I would be looking for who did what, and maybe we've got some of that here. But I would be trying to do everything I could to get each person, not just the last one to fill in a piece, but to do their part in what, what caused it to do that way. It's just too simple to pay it all. I don't express that so well, but my thing, I don't think we ought to be paying out for something that we weren't paid for. You know, people don't have blood insurance and they get played on.
That is why, I think they're saying we are not paying for something that's already been done. We're paying for the areas that have not been done, that Crom is paying for the areas that have already been done.
Who's responsible for doing that?
Who's responsible for?
And that, that area may be for.
Who's responsible for overseeing this? Is that what you're asking? Is it also found in the construction?
Seems like that's what liability insurance is for. And I don't know how we can suck up the everything that goes wrong, and just say, okay, it went wrong here, 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 and here, and be done with it.
Are you saying that we should promote our bond insurance, see if they'll pay any more?
Wherever you consult with.
Have we talked to the bond issuer, is that an option at all?
You mean?
Since Crom has taken responsibility, is that even an option?
When you say the bond issuer, are you speaking of the bond from the construction contract? Is that? I think that what Ms. Lauter had mentioned is, is a lot of what's been going wrong, and it's just taking time to figure out who did what and what caused what. And that's why we're here tonight. Now, we've, we've known what we've known right now since, I guess, really the end of May, and, and, you know, Mr. Ferris and our team have kind of talked back and forth. But what we're asking the city, or what we are recommending the city cover with your nickel, is the repair of something that was not the result of wrong, of, of poor construction or incorrect construction or incorrect design. It's the result of damaged concrete that was really caused based on poor concrete design or poor concrete construction, that, when it was poured in 1949.
Seventy-one.
Right.
Further comments? All those opposed say aye? Those opposed?
No.
Two?
No.
Motion carries. Number six, Adam Piper, LHC Engineering, to discuss improvement options for the wet floor treatment.
So, Mayor, this is a continuation of our discussion on June the sixth. And what we wanted to do tonight is kind of refresh you on the topic, and we have, we got some examples and some, we traveled with your staff to some other plants, and then if it's your pleasure, we can kind of talk about what are the next steps. And there's no action necessary tonight. If you wanted to move forward with this, this would be something we could come back in September for you to discuss. So, if you remember, and just kind of starting with why, like what's, what's like what's our why here? So you have some challenges at the plant maintaining compliance. At the last meeting, you entered your special word of consent kind of surrounding or because of that. And we've been modeling and studying your plant really since late last year. Working with your staff, is there a better way to do this? And we believe that there is. Kind of cutting to the end, and then we'll peel back some layers here. We showed you this slide last time. What we have put together with your staff is a comprehensive improvements project that really covers every outstanding issue that we know of at the plant, geared towards bringing this plant into compliance and satisfying the electrical upgrades that have been kind of, were identified in 2013, and doing it all in one kind of fail swoop. And I highlighted or bolded numbers one and number five there because those are really the two cost drivers as it relates to that large number at the bottom of the screen. So if you remember, the first, I have a number one there. We talked about this last time about converting the aeration process over to something different. So just a real quick refresher, you recognize this, you have four basins, you have four aeration basins, and each aeration basin has six floating aerators in it. In this particular picture, every basin only has four. They're in operation and two that are sitting idle. And we talked about this last time, there's some limitations to those devices. One of the biggest problems is they're either on or they're off. They cannot be throttled. They're very poor at remixing. So if they're turned off for process reasons, and you turn it back on, they don't remix what settled in those areas. And then another way, we talked about this last time, they like electricity. They're big energy consumers. You have about 1,400 horsepower worth of surface aerators there in operation. And then we felt about $60,000 per year has been in maintaining or replacing or removing or changing the motor or shipping them off to be rewound. And every time, you know, staff members have to get into a boat and pedal out into the basins and do their thing and come back. So there's a operator friendliness to this also that is not to be overlooked. So just a couple of pictures from last time. This was a conversion we did in Chatter. But instead of floating aerators on the surface, you have air piping with round diffuser heads that are on the floor of the basin. So this is kind of how the conversion would go. Those aerators look something like this. In our office, we have to have a mock-up of one of these that we, and one of the plants we visited had one too, that we were able to show your staff how they work. So the prior benefit of changing this is it, in our modeling, indicates that you'll have a much stronger chance to maintain, sorry, you stepped your way up there. A much stronger ability to maintain compliance across a broader regime of flow and influence strength. One of the challenges you have at your plant is your flows go up and down a lot. But the strength of the, or the biological strength of your, I'm sorry, your wastewater also goes up and down a lot. And that causes a lot of challenges when you don't have the ability to throttle the air and control the oxygen in your biological process. Another value is the second bullet. There are no electrical or mechanical systems inside the basin. Everything is pulled away from it and out in the building. Easier to maintain. Your staff solved a couple of situations like that. And I kind of touched on that bottom bullet also.
No cement retired or anything in these basins?
We haven't evaluated them. But I can assure you that they will be, will be on top of the list or whoever's listed that's involved should be, make sure that, yes, there are, there are no issues. This particular conversion, because of the way, believe it or not, the basins out there are actually clay. Your basins are actually clay. They're not concrete bottom. So we did a similar conversion somewhere else, and we actually poured new concrete footers across the entire basin to hold up an aerator like that. So other benefits that are a little more unique to your plant, and the top one is not to be overlooked. We only need two out of the four basins to properly treat your wastewater to your limits at 12 million gallons a day, which is your capacity, which means the other two basins can be used as storage volumes to help you buffer peak flows. One of the challenges that Brandon and Sean have is when a storm event comes and all that flow comes down the pipe, they don't have anywhere to put it. They have to treat it, has to go through the plant. And that creates a lot of challenges without some kind of equalization. So this would help you buffer that. The horsepower, we would need less than half. The new process would need less than half the horsepower that you currently use in order to treat the same volume. So over $180,000 per year, and that's in direct energy savings. So that's cost that the water and sewer con or sewer run pays, the electrical fund. If you looked at it as, what could you then sell that power for in the retail market? That number's about three times that in terms of just the space of a grid. And that gets outside of my line of little then, so I don't know. But I know the dollars and cents part. And then the bottom bullet is important as we look at the long-term cost. So I'll show you a minute. If you stick with your current process, you have this six-year electrical plan. And remember, we're finishing the first year of that right now. We talked about years two and three, I think, in June. And so you have about $7 million in current market value of electrical upgrades that are needed at the plant. So changing this and lowering the horsepower and concentrating loads in one place drops that cost dramatically. So just real quick, another question has come up before. Foul diffusion, really in the last two decades, is the preferred method of biological aeration in domestic wastewater. There are, we requested from one of the vendors, hundreds of plants in North and South Carolina that use this process. Very few people, only in very few circumstances, are still designing new plants with floating aerators. These are a list of plants that our firm has worked on, that our staff has worked on. The bottom two, I did one, my partner did the other before we started our firm. But just in the last few years, you can see we've worked on this often. Last week, Sean and Brandon met with us, and we went to Hope County and to Moore County, and they got to speak with the maintenance folks at those two plants, and Moore County especially. Moore County's a 10 million gallon a day plant, and yours is a 12. So there's a lot of similarities there. And, you know, they've been sharing their accounts that they like. But it was a positive trip for them, in our opinion. So I also provided, again, we got a list of about 150 plants in North and South Carolina that use this process. But this is a list of ones that you might recognize. And those, all three of Charlotte's plants use it. Raleigh's, I think they're 80 million gallons a day now. Their use for a plant uses it. Both of Popwings, Greensboro, again. So there's some names on here, places that are in your region that are using the same process. We talked about electrical a few slides back. So if we change the process and we change the electrical loads of the plant, we reduce your long-term cost to rehab the electrical systems by about $3 million, a little, you know, about $3 million. So that's a lot of the evaluation of, well, which one of these processes is better? And what's the long-term cost of energy here? And why that is, we accomplish the same goals. We put in the same levels of redundancy. It's simply related to the horsepower's less than half what you would need. And it's all concentrated in one place instead of 20 more different starters across more different basins. So I showed you this earlier. This is our budget based on what we worked with on your staff for kind of a comprehensive improvement. Yes, sir.
Aerating, what we're doing now is spraying water up into the air, an aerating?
Yes.
What you're proposing is bubbling air through the water and doing it from that end. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And we usually say our plant can handle 12 million gallons of wood. Is that enough?
Your permit capacity is 12 million gallons per day.
And what do you mean by permit?
The state issues you a permit that gives you permission to treat and discharge, and you're allowed to treat up to 12 million.
Okay, how many are we doing?
You're averaging...
Summer, we're doing about 30 million gallons a day.
30 million?
Yeah, but you let it rain, and we're doing 20.
I think on an annual average, you're in the six to seven range. I can send that to Commissioner Ferris.
This is essentially tearing out what we're doing, starting all over?
It's changing the process. We, there would not be significant concrete structures. There would not be any major excavation. Really, all that we would just do is drop your basins, clean them, and then retrofit the inside and build a building that houses all the mechanical equipment.
Okay, not too long back, someone took a tour of that facility. And the reason we did, we had just spent a bunch of money down there. As I remember, is that correct?
That's correct.
And after spending that, all of a sudden, we've got this whole new concept coming out. How much did we spend?
Well, the project that we were involved in, which is just our closeout of two more, two items later, was about $3.5 million at the plant. And then it was a project that finished...
That was about eight years ago.
That's about five years ago.
Yeah, so you revamped, totally different process from this, totally separate from, excuse me, this. You revamped and installed some brand-new equipment and the company did help me with that on the screen part of the installation.
I think what council reviewed most recently was the Headworks project.
That's correct.
And so that is at a different location, would not be undone by what we're talking about here, and still provides the exact same benefits that it was designed to do. What it's designed to do is get out a lot of solids at the front of the plant so it doesn't make its way through the plant, deposit, it'd have to remove later. And then the material itself causes other issues with equipment and wear and tear. So the benefit of that, it's at the front part of the plant. This is at the very back where we're talking now. The benefit of what we did years ago, we still get that because that remains untouched if we change direction here.
So essentially, that plant, a seven-basin, different solids?
Yeah, what you're talking about, Mr. Brown, the screening process, that's at the very first end of the plant. That still works to this day. It works great. Even after having this plant, assuming it goes through, is completed, that'll still be in operation.
Okay, okay. I'm not going to agree with this part.
That's correct.
So this was a project that we put together with your team. It's kind of, if we made the conversion and we did all the electrical upgrades that you needed to get, to accomplish the same goals as your 2013 plan, this is the button. Or if you did not convert the aeration and you proceeded with the electrical upgrades and other things that are really needed at the plant, all of which are included in this, that number's about 12 million. So now the catch is, you would not necessarily need to spend 12 million right now. But in current market value, the difference between the preferred method of treating and what you're doing now is, I'm sampling, that's a relative term, about $4 million. A lot of that would be amortized by the savings and the electrical cost. $180,000 a year would amortize about $3 million in the funding that would be expected for this. So kind of a project A versus project B, part of the discussion we had last time. So the biggest thing we wanted to do tonight is no action necessary. We did visit with your staff to do the plant. Coincidentally, we were not involved, this was three days off. In 1994, the Moore County plant had similar aeration processes to what you have. They converted to this in 1994. And then in my prior employment in 2011 and '12, we expanded that plant from seven TD to 10. So we designed one of the trends.
In Moore County?
In Moore County, correct. And they've been very pleased with it. They love, in fact, the maintenance, the individual who's in charge of maintaining the plant had, he started right after that conversion was done in 1994. And they have a big stack of pictures of what was going on before, the construction process, how it used to go in, and the lead for us and for Sean and Brandon to get to see. So we wanted to continue to discuss this, answer questions. If you wanted to consider an application for funding, we can come back to your September, I guess it's September 7th probably, meeting. And you can consider it then. This would be a really good prospect for this funding. We would be able to tell you, if we came back in September, if you're going to qualify for a grant or not. If you remember when we applied for phase three money, we kind of knew in the end that you weren't going to qualify. This larger project may be different, but suspect it will. I don't want to make any judgments now. But we can tell you that at the next meeting if you qualify for it.
Are you going to qualify? You're going to qualify for a grant or a loan?
Well, you'll certainly qualify for a loan. But we suspect, this one, we didn't have around the analysis yet that you would also qualify for a grant. There's a financial equation that the funding agency uses to determine if you're eligible for grant culture.
One, as I said before, we would have to qualify for a sizable grant to do something like this.
What size grant, what percentage?
If you don't mind, Mr. Brown, or, excuse, Mr. Whitley, I'd rather...
You, Whitley, again.
I'd rather run the numbers and kind of not speculate.
Financial... Okay, before we enter any asking questions, I want your staff an opportunity to say anything they want to say. Staff, anybody wants to?
I felt like a visit, we made in Moore County and Hope.
Come on, you're talking on.
Sean, Sean.
We visited Hope County and Moore County. Talked to most of our plants there. I thought it was very beneficial. I don't know, Brandon, from a maintenance standpoint, I mean, it is completely, it deserves a no maintenance on the system. The general we talked to, started there back, they put the sand. I think they just replaced them last year, is what they're saying. So I mean...
So these heads have a life expectancy of about 20 years.
Yeah.
And then they have to be replaced. And they just done that in Moore County two years ago.
So Sean, the no maintenance of this.
That's correct.
Now, give us in a month's time, an average, how many times you having problems out there now? Have to go out and start it and get in the boat.
Well, they trip out a lot, but they have to go out there every month to each, get out in the boat, go out to each area, get out on there, you know, grease it, do the maintenance on each, all 24 of them. That's once a month.
Is that picture on the right underwater?
Yes.
Okay. That's underneath that thing on the left would be below that.
This picture on the right would be if the water level here was above.
Oh, okay.
Right, right. And of course, these are not on. So when you turn the hair on and the water comes up, it looks like that.
Okay.
So Sean, the reason I thought I'd answer that as a regular monthly kind of thing, is it's all 24 of them?
It is.
Are there times, have there been times when it's got, you've had to go out more than that once a month?
We, on average, we pull about 12 motors and rebuild them a year. You have to go out, pull the motor completely out, put the spiral loader in, rewire it. So that's about 12 a year.
Gotcha, thanks.
And I'll just insist to Mayor, I'll reiterate, you know, Sean, excuse me, Adam referenced the 2013 plan. That's sort of the plan that we were embarking on the path down because we know we've got these special word of consent. We have some electrical issues there. That can lead to overflows, spills, and so forth. So that's, we're on this $12 million path. What we're looking into is the 16 million, which is the fine boulder system. But what Adam's been reviewing is that there's annual savings of $180,000. So over the life of a 20-year loan, you do the math on that, closes the gap fairly significantly. Also, it provides for equalization. So we're obviously working on the INI issue, which keeps rainwater from coming into the plant. Here, Brandon can say on a rainy day, we made 20 million gallons a day. We want that out to start with. But you're never going to completely eliminate it with a systematic one. But we're doing our part to address that. But should you get some, a large volume of rainwater in the plant, by doing this, system will be able to treat what's there more effectively and efficiently. But secondly, we leave two of the basins open for the overflow. That means it doesn't overflow and spill and cause those issues. So there's a lot of benefit to this. And when you run the cost analysis, the gap closes and there's significantly more benefit to the treatment process and compliance. In fact, I think when Adam and I spoke, that even if we continue on a $12 million path, it doesn't get us, it's almost not exactly apples for apples. The 16 million gets us a lot more. So you finish 12 million, you'd have to do a little bit more to even get what you've got. Could potentially have a fine boulder. Could potentially have a fine boulder system, so no decision needed tonight. But that's, that's the crossroads we're at, because we don't want to go down one path and have to back up or spend money to duplicate or go a different route than what we spent money on so far.
Yes, sir. Well, I'll add to that here, then, Mr. Paris. The, this project accomplishes a lot of the redundancy and reliability that are needed. This does not tackle the compliance challenges that you're having, whereas this project does. That's really the big difference between...
And both of them take care of the maintenance issue.
Absolutely. Actually, no, I will, I will say, no, the, this one would not. This one would leave those areas in place.
Okay, so, so just the 16 would do the, the maintenance issue.
Of the two basins we're working on now, we've got money in there for that one. What is that amount? And second, can we roll back in to the 16, to reduce that 16 million?
The two, the, uh, so let me, uh, quantify that a little further. We're going to talk about it in a minute. We are closing out a route that had the first year, year one of your six-year plan included. And that, that's done, and, and all that, this was very applicable and needed costs, and it would apply to the long-term vision. In the project that was approved, uh, for funding this past February, which we haven't started yet, we call that phase three, if you remember, you had about three and a half million dollars, three and some change million dollars worth of electrical upgrades at the plant. That was going to be years two and three of your six-year plan. And I think when we were here in June, the direction was, let's pull that out, let's consider this farther, further, and let's, uh, just focus on the collection system as part of phase three. So, the funding that you have for phase three is, in our words, three to three and a quarter million worth of wastewater plant electrical. The second part of your question, I don't know the answer to. My suspicion is not, that you would not be able to take that and roll into a, a, a $16 million project. They, they tend to look at these and, and kind of draw a barrier around the project, and that's it, and then you reapply for the next one, get the next one. Yeah.
So, we would not, we would not take that, and that would reduce the amount we owe the state, which would not take it, and yet we'll get it in the next project.
You would either, one, not take it, or the state has said, if you want, and we're navigating this, you'll, you'll hear from us again, you could spend some, or even all of that $3 million worth of electrical upgrades. You could spend it in the collection system if you wanted to.
So, from the point where...
Well, we're not sure about that yet. We, we have some suspicions, and we're going to come back to you at some point with some pretty good data that shows the field test we've seen, how we did it, and how we worked with, with Ron Henson and his team to, to make a recommendation. So, we'll come back with, you can either spend the $3 million already allocated on, on what you've already studied, or if you wanted to add one or two other pieces to, and what those would cost. We're working on that right now. And what we do, to, sorry, I didn't answer your question. Is, uh, we, we put these flow tracking devices on main halls, and then we wait for it to rain. And then we watch the flow, and we see where the spikes occur. And we've been blanketing your system for the last three or four months, watching and tracking this, and we found some, we haven't found a spot we've gone yet, but we've, we've narrowed it down to some really good spots that we know need to be addressed.
And what Adam's talking about is, we've, we're already funded for phase three INI, which is going from the plant out toward west, across West Main, Kingsley Drive area. So, we're funded for that. What Adam's talking about now, I believe, is what could potentially be a phase four, which is the 2427 area. But we're trying to determine where that is coming in. Is it entire length of that pipe, or is it in a specific location? Do we need a full replacement? Do we need just a spot repair or change? So, we don't know the answer to it. That's where the data collection is going on right now. So, we don't have the answer yet, because we don't know exactly where it's coming in, and therefore what the solution would be.
Yes, sir.
Being real optimistic about the growth, future growth of Alamo, and I think we're going to cease and grow, what would be the population? I know towns have different personas, and, and just to take an average, what population of a city would that, would that size, what a treatment, uh, or a treatment wastewater plant service?
Uh, that is a complex, that's a complex question. It's a good question. And it has lots of layers, because you always have an industrial...
I understand, I understand.
So, your wastewater production in a, in a industrialized society is around 100 to 120 gallons per day per person. And what I mean production is if you take what the flow that comes to the plant and you divide it by the population served, and that's where that would begin. Uh, now, in your particular case, you have at least one really large user, used to be larger than one more user. You have a couple other significant industrial users, and you serve other, uh, local governments also, so all that kind of contributes to it. So, I don't, I don't know if I can answer that right now. I'll be happy to, to kind of direct back through, Mr. Paris, and get you an answer on, on population trends and growth trends and what it would take to, to use all this.
And we, we, we can treat easily all the water that we take in from the lakes, so, uh, you know, we've got water coming in from one end, and it's going out, you're treating it as it comes out.
Well, we don't have a lot of our shore, we don't get back from, go to the Concorde, it happens.
I understand, I understand.
We don't get that portion back from, yeah.
Your Honor, I think we just move forward, and, because as I read through, what I thought I saw was that, that the grants, the new Clean Water State Revolving opened up on September 30th, but it actually closes on September 30th.
Correct.
So, I think time is of essence.
I think we move forward and see what we get back from the state. I think it totally going to be what the state can give us before we decide whether we can move forward or not.
And that's all, we can, we can come back in September.
Council on the ground, do a little, maybe?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I just give one question about if we do apply for funding, um, have to do that by September 30th? And we would know the early... Trying to get a timeline on when we would have numbers to run laws to know what various financial levels would be.
Yeah, good question. Uh, typically, the applications do in September, you find out in mid-February. Not only if you got funding, but what type of funding. So, how much loan, how much grant, and what interest rate?
Right for budget.
So, at that point, could make decisions whether to move forward?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, we're not, even in September, uh, you, I would not view this as we're moving forward with the 16 million, uh, probably, as you're applying to the funding that you need to evade that.
Further questions, council? Okay. Adam, I was getting number seven, can I surround you again?
Okay.
Add a hyper-LKC engineering change order number four. That's a D-DOG from phase two contract.
So, what I wanted to do, we'll end on a good note here. At the end of the discussion, we'll ask for your consideration of the last change order of phase two, and Mayor was correct, it's a D-DOG to the contract. But I figured, since we're in front of you, and maybe some of this you haven't seen, I'd like to just kind of give you an update, and we've got some cool pictures here for you. To refresh your memory, we're replacing or rehabbing about 7,000 feet of pipe, starting at Saltbury Avenue and extending north up, uh, through Uora Comas, and we're spending, uh, doing work in the waste water plant, replacing the screw pump, converting two, uh, pump stations, and implementing your, uh, year one electrical, about $6.5 million. And for this project, for the, you did receive $500,000 in grant, and the rest of it was zero percent, entered for 20 years, zero percent. So, I don't really have any really nice pictures of gravity sewer, because it's a lot of boring, uh, construction work, but I do have a couple that are important. This is, these are two small pieces of the project, but they are important pieces. This is a before picture. The concrete buttlet on the bottom of the image is the bridge at Salt, uh, uh, Second Street, where Second Street crosses the creek just before year 52. This was the gravity sewer line hanging across the creek before we started. This line then experienced a little failure. We replaced it, or something looks like that, right? So, it's a new pipe, the rest of it, two I-beams, uh, and this has already withstood the, the challenges of your, of the flooding this past spring. Similar example, in, uh, last fall, we came to you about a change order to additional scope, uh, the area behind Lince's, and, uh, it was $80,000 of additional scope to repair this, right? This picture was taken in February. Uh, this is a line crossing the creek, and I'll get the name of the road back behind there. And if it comes and serves, it's a, it's a main outfall. You can see this was experiencing some challenges, and we replaced it with this. So, very similar, um, scope to the other one, part of it. So, kind of similar one after, part of the project was, at the wastewater plant, we replaced screw pump A1, which is at the main part of the plant, near Brandon's offices. This was before, right before we started. This was after they had taken it out. You look down the bottom, you'll see, uh, two jobs are working down, three jobs are working down there. This is what it looks like after they got it out. This was all sitting on the yard, actually was delivered. This is what it looks like installed, and, uh, Owen, I'll prompt you to pull that video up, if you will. He's heading here. Owen, are you there?
He's not in the middle.
He's about 15 seconds ahead of the leg, give him...
There we go.
Is that vertical?
It is vertical. Uh, excuse me, no, it's up and down. It's laid at about a 45-degree angle.
Okay.
Yeah, excuse me. Okay, Owen, sorry, thank you, sir. All right, it's, uh, yeah, so that was the video. Oh, there we go. So, that was the screw pump A1. The last little slides here, C station and D station were also screw pump stations. And what we did, if you remember, it was several years ago, we decided to scrap the screw pumps and convert them to something that's much more user-friendly, much more, your long-term operational replacement cost is a lot less. This picture's from 2015. You can, the, your staff will just give you a feel for the scale of how big these are, and you can see they're down in the pit, close to them, and this was a pretty daunting place when they were operational. It's not a really fun place to be. So, uh, what we did, and this is a step-by-step process, we set a structural steel platform. You can see in the picture at the top of the, this steel is new. Here you can see the piping and the, uh, grating being put down for your staff access up above. We still see the screw pumps in the background in operation. This is a little closer to being done. You see all the piping, and then this is kind of the finished product. You see the pumps are gone in the background, and this, uh, they were just about done painting when this picture was taken about three months ago. Now, the pumps are down here, and they can be removed with the city's boom drum, instead of having to rent a huge crane to come out and pull that pump. And these pumps cost about $25,000 to replace, whereas those screw pumps cost about $350,000 to replace. So, you're, it, it just was an end. These are 25 horsepower, you can run one, whereas the other ones, excuse me, these are 40 horsepower, and the other ones were 50 horsepower. So, you kind of get a feel for, yes, it costs more upfront, but as you get through the life of this thing, there's substantial savings and ease of operability. Just a quick status, uh, both contracts are done. Uh, everything seems to be functioning as intended. We were $182,000 and, and some change under budget.
It's all right there.
So, and we're still navigating this. I'm sure staff will come back to you. You can do one of two things. You can, there are some needs at the plant that would be eligible costs that you would have to budget for down the road. We could work in, or, or you could just reduce it on, or there's a, no, no need, not a decision to be made right now. That's something that will, that will come up down the road. What is, uh, on the agenda tonight is the last change order relative to the pipeline work. It is a D-DOG of $41,000, uh, and it basically, most of it is reconciling the quantities, unit price contract, the quantities that were in the contract versus the quantities that were actually put in the ground. It's just reconciling the difference between those two.
For the move approval of the D-DOG of $41,000?
My councilman ran up to put the change order for these in.
So?
Thank you, my councilmember Hughes, for the discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Does the vote, for security? Adam, how many, now that we've been in phase one, phase two, how many elevated sewer lines do we still have from the wastewater plant up through Uora Comas?
From the wastewater plant up to Uora Comas, you only have one. No, check it, you have two.
You got two right here. Did we have any in phase one?
You had one in phase one, right there above Main Street, where Main, where, uh, excuse me, where Second Avenue crosses the creek. I guess that's Main Street, yeah. Uh, if you look up north, and you look down in the creek, you'll see it on there. Uh, and then there were three and, three, four in phase two. Two of you and two others, four in the phase two.
There's an elevated pipe that runs next to Saltbury Avenue Bridge. Is that sewer or water?
That's water. Well, no, there, I think there may be both there, actually. Just north of the bridge you're talking about, across the...
That's a bit, it's south.
So.
South. Right there at the bridge, by the way.
I think there's water in sewer, and that, Ryan...
Also, on some of our pictures, on some of the stuff we're looking at, there was a lot of pipe showing, kind of laying in the creek. When we went through, did this move all that out of the creek, and it's all buried now?
There, uh, yes. There, there are a couple of spots where we still had to cross the creek. We, we just, when this gravity sewer was put in a decade ago, there's some things you can change, and there's some things you can't. So, we changed the ones we could, but for the most part, it's out of the creek. Yes, sir. That's all, Mayor. I thank you for your time, uh, and I, I appreciate it. Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Comment, questions, council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Going back to number seven, the Department of Health reports are in your agenda. Anyone have any questions? There were nine up there on CARES funding. I believe Nikki is the one on the left.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council Manager. Um, you should have in front of you a hard copy of the presentation in regards to CARES funding. Um, as you all know, back in March of 2020, Congress approved the Coronavirus Aid Relief Economic Security Act, i.e. CARES. After that, um, our General Assembly passed Session Law 2020-4, and then later 2020-80, allocating funding to, um, local governments. Session Law 2020-4 appropriated $150 million to counties. Session Law 2020-80 increased that appropriation to $300 million. Um, in Session Law 2020-80, counties are required to share 25% of their allocation to municipalities. That allocation must be spent by December of 2020 on COVID-related expenses. We, as municipality, must submit a spending plan to Stanley County. The guidance related to what is a COVID-related expense is defined by the U.S. Treasury Department. All municipalities must submit their spending plans to counties, uh, August 31st, 2020. So, on the slide where it says local allocation and expense areas, you'll see there that Stanley County received $2.49 million, and the allocation that we are eligible for is $330,000. We receive that allocation based on our population. You will also see a list of eligible expenses. In terms of our allowable expenses, where we see the most pain is under payroll expenses. So, if you flip to this, the slide that details how we plan to spend our allocation, the city plans to use our CARES funding for payroll expenses associated with our response to the coronavirus pandemic. Under payroll, government entities are able to be reimbursed under three categories. And you'll see them there, substantially dedicated, substantially different use, and COVID-19 leave. Payroll expenses are the most effective use of the funds for our city, because that's where we see the largest allowable expenses. And we also have a solid system for tracking them. So, I'll define each category and how we plan to apply them. Substantially dedicated, so public safety... Substantially dedicated, so public safety employees are designated by the U.S. Treasury as substantially dedicated. Therefore, their salaries are allowable expense. Specifically, this includes substantially dedicated employees who are performing work within or in addition to their routine requirements. That furthers the government's response to the pandemic. This does not include administrative staff. It only includes non-administrative staff in fire and police. Under the category of substantially different use. The U.S. Treasury defines substantially different use as employees that have been redirected or reassigned and are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID. In public utilities, we've had to reassign an employee to manage our payment plan program for our residents who've been unable to pay their utility bill because of the financial hardship that COVID has placed on them. In parks and rec, programming was suspended for our employees in recreation and those employees were reassigned to do work to clean, disinfect, and maintain our parks during the pandemic. Those expenses are covered under the CARES Act funding. Parks and Rec also plans to implement an enrichment program to address the needs of our local middle schoolers who, as a part of the school system's reopening plan, will go one week in-person classroom instruction and opposite weeks remote learning. This represents a significant community need and parks and recreation departments are across the country are all sort of attempting to address this need. We will need to hire staff for this new program and those expenses are allowable under the CARES Act. That plan is still being worked through and council will receive an update at a future meeting. And finally, under payroll allowable expenses is COVID leave. As you're aware, we give paid leave to our employees who have to quarantine because of COVID, take care of a family member who has to quarantine, address childcare issues or are taking FMLA due to COVID-19. And so we can use this fund, our CARES funding, towards our COVID leave expenses. In terms of next steps, we have to submit a plan into the county by August 31st in addition to an agreement between the city and the county that is to be signed by the city manager and the county manager. Britt has reviewed that and given her approval. The team is working together on the final details of the plan that's going to be submitted to the county. The goal is to have that to Andy Lucas by Friday, August the 21st. And then after that, we have to submit a monthly report to Stanley County, which includes three different expense reports for us to be reimbursed by them. Our final report is due to them on December the 18th. That's a high-level overview for our CARES funding. Obviously, we will come back to city council whenever we need to do a budget amendment to receive those funds. At this time, that completes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for the information. Just a quick question, approximately how many current staff or staff members have we had directly affected by COVID-19?
When you say directly.
Like the staffs I've been in fact with.
I'm sorry, I can't say that.
How many city employees do we have either had or currently have COVID-19?
So I don't have that exact number, but what I can tell you is that in payroll expenses and things correct me if I'm wrong, we've spent approximately $35,000 so far and we are projecting to spend by the end of December around $67,000. But I can't give you an exact number of employees who've taken that leave, but I can provide that information. I think Dana did provide that in one of her monthly, the last monthly report. And so I can get that information for you and have it in my weekly email for Friday.
Thank you.
Mr. Harney, I see in the monthly report for public housing, we, and actually the number relatively low, I think we have only six to label in accounts. Do you know by chance if that is related to COVID, you know, maybe our residents, our workers, or anything?
I don't know if it's directly related to COVID, but what HUD has said is basically, you know, you can't evict anyone while we're under this pandemic. It's a federal program. And so I would be speculating if I said it was related to COVID, it could be related to other matters, but I can get more specific details from Lee Staden and also include that in the Friday weekly update.
The reason I was asking because out of the city's accounts, I think it totaled $3,719 and if there was a way, if it was COVID related to you lost someone's funds in that aspect.
So, and Lee is on the phone, so if you want to jump in, Lee, or fine, I'm not stating anything, please speak up. There is designated CARES funding for public housing. So if we use money from our allocation, we would be double dealing. So we're not allowed to do that.
Anyone have any questions, Chief of Order?
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 10, presentation on the middle school academic enhancement program. Britt had a, I think this or something, the man who did not be here, I think. Who's going to do the talk over this program?
Well, there's not going to be a presentation because of that change of plans due to the illness. So what Ms. Harney referred to was that we do plan to, if possible, fill the void that I think a lot of our residents are going to see in educations and slash childcare by providing educational services through parks and recreation during the day. As you know, the school system is going to one week, I got going back up. Students have the option of doing strictly online, but there's also the option of going one week and being off the next with remote learning. So that creates challenges for families in terms of supervision, childcare, educational assistance. So we plan to put together a program at the Waddell Center where we have morning session, afternoon session. Of course, you have children alternating weeks that they're at school. So if you have 15 in the morning, 15 in the afternoon, you've got two weeks of that. So we could serve up the 60 middle schoolers and help them with their schooling, education, also provide relief for parents that kids will have a place to be in a safe environment while also being provided educational assistance on their off week. So when, if we find that we are able to move forward with this at a future meeting, we'll come back and give council some of the details and make the presentation then. But that is our intention to be involved in a program such as that.
Council is going to agree with that, mind leading the start probably before we come back, we have a meeting again after that. Everyone okay with that?
We're just making council aware that that's something we're going to do because it's a little bit different, but it's also filling a big need within the community. Just want to make council aware.
Just FYI, in the description on that particular issue, there's a misspelling of Alamo on the description of that. Of course, men, some stuff like that.
So, but leading into 2020, so the ordinance, I'm jumping into the consent agenda, but does that reflect back to Michael about the enhancement program? That ordinance 2020 for the Chromebooks?
It is somewhat related because we got money for the Chromebooks, as you point out. Of course, we do, say everything was back to normal, we do offer an after-school program anyway. So those were needed at any point. Now that we may get into this alternate week during plan, the school plan that they're under, they even provide a greater benefit because we do provide the after-school program anyway.
I think the Chromebooks is from a grant that Mr. Curran.
Yeah, it is, it is. But I, for some reason, sidebar, I was thinking that the school is providing those, are they not?
We had.
See, that's when I saw this and I'm jumping. So my understanding is that the school system provides Chromebooks to students. The grant that we received under Parks and Rec is outside of COVID, but it sort of enhances, first of all, it enhances the programming that we can have at EEYWaddell Center. And so if there are students that present without having a Chromebook, we do have some for their use, whether it be through this middle school enrichment program or other programming that we do over at EEYWaddell. So there are two separate funding streams in terms of where we got the money for the Chromebooks, but it enhances anything that we do related to the middle school enrichment program.
Mr. Harney?
I don't know who's responsible for coming up with that, but I'm, I'm very impressed and pleased with what we're doing on that because I have great concern that during the time of virtual learning, non-face-to-face learning, that there's going to be a greater increase in the difference between the haves and the have-nots. And that worries me a great deal. And I don't know who's responsible for this, but I congratulate him, did, and thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you're doing.
This was an idea brought to us by Parks and Recreation.
Not a surprise.
Which is great because Parks and Recreation is, you know, struggling to provide traditional programs and it's not possible. So they have been very creative and thinking about the community's interest in by coming up with a way to fill a current need.
Number 11, municipal councilors in your agenda. Anyone have any questions? Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. Number 12, ordinance 2020 to appropriate grant funds received in Parks and Recreation. Number 13, execution of the performance incentive agreement with quality enclosures. Number 14, consider street closures for 2020 autumn extravaganza. Number 15, consider street closure for 4D doubles 5K. Number 16, the approval of the alleyway project. And number 17, adoption of the fiscal year 21 budget counter. Any questions? Anyone think that they go out for?
I only have one thing. I don't want to pull it out. But the alleyway project, we've been on that thing for a long, long time. And I would encourage moving ahead with that as quickly as we can, get those parking lots paved and that sort of thing, get that thing going. That could add a great deal to downtown Alamo.
Anyone else?
Your honor, I would like to move, take 13 off. We just take 13 off, but I would move approval of the consent agenda as is with the exception of 13.
Motion, my councilmember Hall, for the consent agenda with the exception of 13. Second, my councilmember Pales, for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Does the opposed motion carry it?
Now, your honor, and the reason I did that, if I might come, continue, is that if we look at the description of the execution of that performance agreement with quality enclosures, if there has been some changes, there have been some changes not in the, there have been some organizational changes, none on our end or their end, but I just felt like that because of the significance of what we were in and into, I didn't want to do the consent. So we'd move approval outside on its own.
Motion, criminal number 13, councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second, my councilmember Ramon, for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Does the opposed motion carry it? Moving into unfinished business, consider bid for SCBA equipment in the fire department. Mr. Britt, would you come up and start the last minute? Go ahead, Mr. Fire Team, if you can speak.
No, sir, I'm here to answer questions or.
You want to ask that, I'll be the attorney to come up and speak.
So last month, we brought before city council the SCBA bid for fire equipment for the fire department. Based on my recommendation last time, I recommended to go with the low bid because it was the lowest response of responsible bid, meaning it was the lowest one that met all specifications in RFE. From that discussion, council wanted me to get advice from other councils as well as consult, a grant consultant that has direct relationship with FEMA to figure out the parameters of the award to provide and guidance to council. So from the last meeting, I have talked to attorneys at the school of government and the local municipalities. I have provided a synopsis in the memo attached to the agenda, but just to give a briefer version, so in some school of government and local municipalities kind of said something similar, council can go with the higher bid, however, you have to be extremely cautious if the lowest bid did meet those specs. Secondly, we went to the grant consultant who has a direct relationship with FEMA and from that two items of information were given. The first of which is since these grants are based on financial need, it's important not to overspend from the amount they would receive because that shows that you may not have been as needy as we purported to be in our grant application. Secondly, of which, just in regards to purchasing, it wouldn't be an option to go with the higher bid and get less units to be able to fit in that grant cap of a little over $300,000. So we'll have to get 45 units first and we wouldn't be able to supplement the grant with additional funds because we showed that we were needy. And in addition to kind of the recruitment rules and the grant rules, there are also just practical components. So from my understanding, the fire department has been using this equipment for quite some time. I think the length of use is about 15 years. So the low bid equipment has been in use with the city and has proved to be sufficient for the fire department's needs as is. And then lastly, a big point of contention last time was the buddy breathing component. I guess there's a tethering that keeps the firemen together in regards to if they're the down firefighter. When, just doing a little more research on the frequency of that, it's actually not deployed frequently, the buddy breathing system, so it wouldn't be kind of a material element in discussion of whether or not to reward this bid when it's not historically frequently used. And so based on kind of the recruitment rules, the grant rules, knowing the history of the fire equipment that's currently in use and the infrequency of this buddy breathing component, I would recommend to council to consider the low bid.
Thank you. Do you want to have any questions for Mr. Britt?
I'd just like to make a statement before motions on the table. I, I am not happy with how we've gotten to where we are with this. And this is not directed at anyone or anybody or any group or anything else. I understand about what low bid says, but I use that analogy and it's been thrown back at me, which is just fine, that we were not talking about apples and apples, we were talking about apples and oranges. So I think the thing that we, this is staff included, all staff included in council, is that we need to realize when we set something out for bid, that we need to make sure the scope is covered about what it is we want to do from the very beginning. And if we have an in-house committee of anybody, any of our, anyone, in this situation, it was in-house committee of firefighters who spent time and effort investigating particular vendors and, and different opportunities of the actual equipment, that we need to take it and we need to take heed from what that committee wanted from the very beginning or what they thought what they needed from the very beginning. Because I think that we had the apple with the cart before the horse in this, that a lot of stuff was done and what we sent out for bid originally was not what folks came back as the best on the market. So with that said, I'll shut up, but I thought, I feel like I've got to do that because in all of my years of doing this, I understand what the rules say about low bid. And whomever you've got the information from, probably the best that I've heard, okay, is when a grantee purchases items that are beyond what they were awarded, the question comes up about the financial need. And I highlighted that in doing my homework, so I'll shut up.
I have to concur with what councilmember Hall just said, especially whenever we had to spend over the past year or possibly, I think they conducted at least six or seven meetings and evaluations of equipment vendors and things of that nature. And they provided council with a detailed analysis report of their findings, which a lot of them dealt with features that me and you may take for granted, but firefighters are the ones in the heat of the fire, you know? They know what's best for them better than we can ever determine from council seat, you know? I know a lot of times, you know, whenever we're dealing with the bidding process and local government, yes, it's common courtesy to go with the low bid, you know? But whenever you start thinking about safety features and compatibility, upgraded technology and things of that nature, I'm not willing to put the firefighters at risk. And that's just like, in my opinion, you know, us having a plan to give us recommendations and then what recommendations they give us, we go in a totally different direction, you know? That's just my thought on that.
Further comments?
Uh, Your Honor, if you don't mind, I just said a couple things also, you know, when this thing, I agree with Councilmember Hall, I think this thing has got kind of a mullet of as far as the, as far as a lot of the buildings, a lot of deals. I think at the end of the day, when you look at the process that was put before us, the committee, the firefighters that went out and surveyed these companies, I think at the end of the day, when you look at all the different providers, they all three meet the safety specifications that were, that were sought. I think it puts a great burden on us as city council. We have to, we have to make sure that we are providing our firefighters with safe equipment, equipment that's been approved by national fire personnel, I don't know the actual background for those folks, but at the end of the day, we put a bid out there, and we specify the information that are the equipment that we need for this bid to be complete. We shut it up for different companies, three different companies, you know, answered the call, if you will, and American Blaze Masters South, Alamo, Carolina, was the lowest bid of this, of this equipment. I'm convinced that we accept that bid and grant that to American Blaze Masters South.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hall, to support American Blaze Masters South. Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion.
Mr. Barrett, if I may just say, if you read the firefighters' comments, though, I think that one another one of their concerns were the lack of upgraded technology and compatibility with other equipment, because I refer back to whenever we purchased the common system here in this new city hall, we went with pretty much 18, and then five or six years later, you know, we just been in, we moved in here, it was 2009, but somewhere in that timeframe, I remember we had to have an emergency call meeting because the system was down, we couldn't get components and stuff to get it corrected, so we had to basically purchase a new system, which cost us more money in the long run. Sometimes it's not better to go to cheaper.
Well, brother, unfortunately, I agree with that part of it, the technology, but I don't, I'm still unclear as to what could have been done to avoid this, however, reading through everything, it seems so far, and it's the only thing I'm clear on, is I don't have a good legal opinion because we derive from the requirement that it was due, and that maybe could do my opinion of the quality, but the equipment rating was now risking litigation from the lowest bidder, risking losing this ground and future grounds, and just reading, holding through the information that Britt provided this to see. I don't see much of a legal or merit allowed to do anything else of that. They voted for the lowest bidder, for the next one, for the next one.
Anyone else have a comment? All those in favor say aye. Raise your hand, please. Those in favor, two of us. Number 19, traffic information from the Gentry Avenue with North Second Street intersection. I'll ask the police chief and the fireworks director to come on. You were asked to get some numbers together, and you've done that and supplied that, and I will get you in front where council can ask you questions if they have to. Council, you saw their numbers and the reports, how do you know what's issue?
I'm just curious, if you have a recommendation, because, you know, that, it seems like a simple situation that from all the data, nothing's simple. I just wondered, you've got an analysis of the situation and the data, do you have a recommendation for it?
Well, just based off the crash statistics, I mean, we don't see that there is a major problem, nothing that constitutes putting some type of device up, but I know we used to have one there, and it worked fairly well when it was there.
And I may have assaulted the agenda a bit, but our renter also apologized. What was the reason we initially, because I can remember there was a, actually a traffic signal there. I guess after the storm or something, it was displaced, and we never put it back. Is that, is that just kind of by design, or what was that?
That's correct, Councilmember Aldrich. I seem to recall it maybe being taken down in late 90s or early 2000s, and I found somebody else that seems to feel that way, but it went back up eventually. In this case, it came down with the microburst in 13. I couldn't remember if 12 or 13. So in 13, it came down, at that time, council said, let's just, just leave it and see how, you know, see how it goes, and leave it to see how it goes and how it works out, as, you know, continued on, so it never came back up to make any changes to put anything back, but that's how we got it.
One of the reasons the council did not make any, take any action back when it came down is between the time it came, you know, came down and previous, I suppose, the middle school went in. Middle school used to have a lot of students walking from the school to the Y. When it changed it in our memory school, the last time I talked to Ms. Smith, and I talked to her back when that was going on, they really don't have any students going to the Y unless they're supervised. Now, they go for swimming lessons and things like that, supervised then, and during the lockdown, they just don't have a lot of students moving after school to go to the Y. So that was one of the things council took into consideration. Council actually took two things into consideration. They talked about couldn't stop, stoplight back up, and making speed limit 35, or leaving it down, and leaving it at 25. That was the discussion that council had the last time it was discussed.
I just, no, come in Ross, in Ross's opening paragraph, and I don't know who is talking there, but we keep hearing, I keep hearing something there, that's crazy. Ross, your opening paragraph, observation of the current conditions, pretty much lays it out, and from, just paraphrasing, whatever's done, something needs to be done, because if I'm reading this correctly, there's some markings and some not markings, and I think even John, when John came before us last month, John said, you know, that left turn lane, I mean, people have been known to stop or to slow down for the left turn lane there, and they're about to get rear-ended because the folks in the right-hand going south aren't far enough over. So your comments that something needs to be done, if we leave it just the way it is, some remarkings need to be done, and I saw somebody's drawings, and I don't know who I asked, the chief or Ross, there was some comment about taking out that left turn lane. I mean, would that, if we leave it just the way it is, and take out the left turn lane, would that help the situation? Did I see that, or did I read that somewhere else?
I put that in one of the configurations.
Okay, see, I thought I'd seen it, okay.
And the main reason I did that is because Mr. Williams did express, you know, requests and some old street parking there.
Right.
I think we do know that there might be some future commercial activity there on the corner of Montgomery and Second. But that would also alleviate a little bit of the confusion there with the turn lane, and as tight as that area is going into their personal driveways too, because I think that's one of the concerns that he has now, to make a turn into the driveway, you always have to get into the turn lane to get into his driveway, so that would help. One, it would slow some traffic down through that intersection, if you would narrow the street down a little bit with old street parking, but it's also going to help alleviate that confusion. Right now, if you look at the overall layout, this in that first picture, it gives the illusion of, those intersections should be in the three-way stop. We have stop bars on Second Street that are installed, and one crosswalk on Second Street, so it gives the illusion to traffic.
That there is.
For people that aren't used to the traffic flow, that they should be stopping. So that's why I wanted to give the three scenarios there, whether we do anything at all, whether council decides they're going to make it a one-way stop off Montgomery or a three-way stop, we need to clean up the intersection, one way or another. That's why I presented the three different scenarios.
Well, then there's that issue of parking, and I think Miss Lauer brought this up at the Catholic church. I mean, when there's parking in front, headed north in front of the Catholic church, if you come out of Montgomery and look north, you can't see, you can't see around that corner at all. So is it, would it be, I'm looking at the configuration now, where you've got some parking, looks like parallel parking on the west side.
I think with the proper, with proper striping, and this kind of goes back to how we handle, where was it that we didn't have light striping, and we added some additional light striping, and it helped the layout.
Is the road light enough for parking on both sides?
The road is actually light enough for parking on both sides. And it, and that could, in itself, that would create more congested traffic flow coming through if you had old street parking on this side of the street.
Oh, from where to where? From, I mean, start how far north, I mean, like that whole intersection?
Well, right now, on North Second, if you look at this current picture, actually, the old street parking stops about right here in front of the old supermarket. The old street parking stops there, the street stays the same width all the way to the past Parks Funeral.
So there is no marked, going around, there's a Catholic church, there is no marked places for it?
No, and so what you see, that like you said, sometimes on Sunday mornings, without having established markings there, people just park where they want to, and if they get too close to that intersection, close to Montgomery Avenue, it is kind of a light side issue trying to turn out.
Saturday afternoon, when I see it, Saturday afternoon during that 5:00 minutes.
I think he would park that, but also that was, remember, we designated the apartment area right there at the corner, if we had, if we liked it, maybe we would have brought it there too. We've got some out there, but then giving parking, pulling that on down.
So if we, if we did a three-way stop configuration, is that better than putting an actual signal over there? Because what I think about is, in the same, I know a lot of, probably a lot of city employees, a lot of courthouse employees are using North Second Street, you know, to get it from Hollywood to downtown panel. Do you guys think there's any chance of the traffic getting backed up there if we don't put like a back-up stop light either?
My recommendation would not be a stop light. My recommendation would be a three-way flashing red light. So it's, you would treat it just as any other three-way stop side intersection. The only reason I would recommend, and per the MUTCD, they say three-way flashing lights would be useful in areas where you might have a sight view issue, so it's really not, I'm thinking more of a lot coming from the Parks and Funeral heading south, coming around that curve over the top of the hill, seeing that flashing light, people would live there to stop time coming in. But that would be, that would be what I would recommend.
But the party will also tell you, unless it's changed, that you would react to an accident with a three-way stop sign.
What's that?
You better, you better, if you're paid, you know, can you react to an accident with a three-way stop sign?
I don't think the MUTCD is going to say that.
Create more accidents than not. Do we have a local flashing stop somewhere? Do we have a little action review?
We don't, we have flashing down Third and South and MLK, but that's two, that's two, two-way red and two-way caution on that intersection.
Whoa, 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 where's that?
Down below the jail, on South Street and South Third.
Councilmember, we have one in Fourth Street and South Fifth Street.
I think we have one in North Second.
Councilmember, both of them years ago, it was more tight than Montgomery, but it was a flashing red light.
It was a recommendation. Four-way, four-way flashing.
Yeah, right.
Um, I just, you know, looking at the three-way configuration, Ross, and I thought this was very, I thought your work in the layout was done very well. I think John could speak to this, but we know there's going to be a commercial restaurant on the corner. We also know that this, the Hall House is being worked on, and that is going to become an event center. So I think we need to go ahead and look at parking in this area, and go ahead and address it now while, while we know this is coming, we need the parking downtown, so, you know, the three-way stop, the way you've got that laid out with the parking, we can park on both sides, I think that's, that's even a bonus, but I travel that route on Sundays when we have church, and I will purposely turn right. I go to the first intersection, I would turn left, but I can't see, and so I just go, when I forget, I go right, and then I turn left and circle back around it. I, I like the three-way stop configuration personally.
Another big issue, speed coming through there too, a lot of times, when they don't stop, and you're coming into downtown, I mean, it makes sense to slow down when you're coming to downtown, I think that would help with that.
To Ken, to Ken's point, I run that route a lot. I mean, I run up there pretty much every, every day, I run up North Second, and traffic, well, it seems like once they get past, well, that's Parks and Funeral, it's happened then. I mean, I think they're trying to make a lot, I don't know if they're trying to make a test, police department, but it's.
And that's just bad on both, both north and south right there, and I know you had to speak, you got, you had to speak, Monica up there, but the worst part for me is coming right there, head, turning left on Second at, is it Troy, is it, which one is the most north road?
CB, CB.
CB, I knew it was a new name. But the CB, when you're turning left there, the way the instructor reads, just the layout and the, you don't know if somebody's coming north, you don't know if somebody's coming south if you're turning north right there. To me, that is as dangerous as.
That's a lot worse than the South.
Yeah, it is.
I think it slows people down, and you've got all this parking on the side of roads, and there's going to be more, we know more partial growth down in this area, it will slow everybody, and you're going to have to slow down, you're going to have to stop.
Since we don't, we don't have a local flashing red light intersection anywhere, a three- or four-way stop?
With North Side and Bell River Avenue, there's flashing red light, North Side.
But there's stops in there?
There's stops. Well, you're going to have stop signs regardless, the flashing red light, it's more of an attention, visibility, hey, there's, you've got, you've got stops in here. Yes, signs will, signs have to be there, stop signs have to be.
So we agree for number one, that the road is wide enough through there, Second Street is wide enough for parking on both sides of the street, okay? We've agreed on that, right?
Yes.
And it's already on both sides of the street until you get to the art.
The art gallery.
The art gallery.
Yes.
And then, north of that, there's only parking on the east side, but it's not marked. It's not marked, there's not marking.
John?
Yes.
In front of the old gas station, will the entrance need to stay there with the, with it going retail or not?
No, we're going to recommend going away with the entrance on North Second and Montgomery Avenue.
Okay, so if we're going to mark it, that would be the thing to get rid of.
Yes. I'm against it.
We've had this conversation.
We all landscapes, we will not leave those two entrances to the.
Okay. Council, what you wishes?
So whoa, 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 so you've already talked about that.
Well, this, this conversation was when I met Mr. Williams out, just to make sure what his request was, when he was explaining to me what could possibly be going in the corner there in the future.
Right.
This could happen, so that's what we were talking about, additional, there's a possibility of additional.
Right, that's what I'm thinking is, for the very corner, for both that entrance off Montgomery and entrance off Second, they may be closed, but we still need to keep open the one that goes into the beauty shop and all that behind them.
Oh, yeah, those are, those are.
That's, you're proposing keeping that open as a shared entrance into both of them, isn't that what they were looking at?
Yeah, there's two entrances, like right to the station, those two will wait.
Okay, I guess I haven't paid that close attention.
I like the three-way stop.
Other two.
Any votes?
I move that we proceed with a three-way stop configuration at the corner of Montgomery and Second.
Motion, I have a review, second, I have a.
And just for clarification, does that do away, if we do this three-way stop, are we doing away with the left turn lane?
You don't really need the left turn lane if you go to three-way stop.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm asking that.
Is that, is that motion then assuming or taking that in?
If you add the old street parking, the turn lane is going to be taken out of the way, so you can't have, you can't have the turn lane in.
I just didn't want that thing.
Include the old street parking.
The motion doesn't include that.
She did, she just did.
I want to include old street parking.
No, why are you asking about that?
Oh, include a, I guess it's just a red flashing, is that?
Include a light.
Yes, include the light.
And the old street parking, right?
And the old street parking.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
So add. You should get it on.
On what?
Yes. May I clarify?
Chief, chief, chief.
What we'll do is come back to the next meeting, the order to make these changes.
I want you to begin with public utilities on.
Oh, no. Not be it on someone else.
Oh, yeah.
It's time to do the CNET work now, I think, and then. Give us time to do the C M work now, let them in.
Yeah, what I've, what I've brought out of the lines of complaint and re-straits.
So before at least, so where are we on North Second and Salisbury? Right in front of Bank, the right corner of Yari Bank on Second. That road is horrible if you're coming south on 52.
It's a dangerous intersection.
Oh, that's right. Never mind, never mind. That, there, there.
It's a north-south intersection.
Yes.
That's worth changing for the city to stop. The city part, every part of the road.
Okay, that's what I thought. It is really rough if you're coming south on Second Street, okay, right at Salisbury, in that curve right in front of the bank. It is, I thought that part was steep.
That's worth changing.
Thank you.
Well, if you remember, six years ago was when the city came through and, you know, the project was, was to mill up.
Oh, I remember that.
From, I guess it's Troy Alexander Mall all the way up to North Street.
Right.
All that pavement from Troy Alexander on the back is probably put down about the same time what we milled up.
Oh.
So it's that same ripple effect that we've had all the way through.
But it is just worse now. It feels like when you're going around that curve, I think it.
That would be another project of Council's to fund, we can look into.
Thank you.
It's not on our resurfacing, or, that would be a, that would be almost a full depth renovation or a five-inch mill in field, is what we ended up doing here today.
What we did was, I'm straight years ago, we just used to build and smooth it out. Do you have the equipment to do that?
No.
You don't have any building equipment now?
It is horrible.
You're talking about what we did from Troy Alexander up to South Street?
No, I might, we did from Montgomery north, maybe a hundred foot.
No.
We also did it in front of, we said, if we want to hold down, I got that in front of the living room, but we had the equipment there, but I think that's a paving machine that you do.
We don't have anything.
We don't have anything.
Not, not, we have milling capabilities to mill out small patches and poples, but nothing on full street. There's, we don't have that.
Well, now, we need to pull a rip end and then we will say. We need to do that.
We make it, go out and try some areas, but it's probably not going to be efficient in those areas, like what you're saying.
It is.
Might be a good place to stop, though, I don't know.
Again, our, our milling heads eighteen inches wide.
That's what we need.
We, we might try some smaller streets, but I wouldn't want to go out there on a heavily trafficked street and, and mess it up and then have to call in a contractor to try to come back and fix it afterwards.
All right, let's move forward. Underpointing discussion, City Mayor on the hallway.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman, Major Ferris. Tonight, we wanted to follow up from our workshop that was held on the fifteenth of July, and just skip through some of this for the sake of time this evening, and go straight to the work that we were asked to do immediately following the workshop. And we were basically asked to look at two specific policies, and I want to discuss those with you further. The first policy we were asked to revisit from our revised employee handbook was the rehire policy. That's on page fifty-six in the, the existing document. And what we were asked to do there was estimate the cost impact if we were to address our existing staff. We have roughly six employees who started work with the city, left us for a brief period, ranging from two weeks to, you know, two hundred some days, and then they returned and have maintained their careers with us here. So we have six employees that fall into that category. So if we were to, you know, fully reinstate that staff, that would give us an annual increase to longevity pay if we reinstated longevity, and that's the total amount there for all of those six employees. Four thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-five cents approximately would be the increase in longevity. We would also see an additional amount in hours that we would need to add to a sick leave bank based on time that they would have accrued had they been, been reinstated. And then the final item, we had estimated that in the email to you that we have provided to you, that's very hard to estimate because everybody's at a different level with these six. We've had one person that was here two years before they left us, another one in another department was here fourteen years before they left and returned, so that number's going to vary. These individuals are probably going to retire at some point with us anyway, we hope, but we're just not sure, you know, how much longer they would have to work. So that number is extremely hard to estimate on the retiree health insurance, but there may be some difference there as well.
Follow-up question?
For the longevity check?
Yes.
And I may be wrong, but if these folks are in, for instance, one of our divisions that is, I call self-funded, okay? Where our salary is basically within water and sewer or electric or landfill.
The enterprise.
That's right, the enterprise. Then that really doesn't come, that five thousand dollars or portion thereof would not come out of our general fund, is that correct?
I'm going to have to defer to Manager Ferris on that.
That's correct. It comes out of the fund where they work.
Where they work. So, and so then back to, you mentioned that we've had some that were two weeks to up two hundred days. I do see some difference of in six point eight point one and six point eight point two, when it talks about rehiring within a hundred and eighty days or between a hundred and eighty and three sixty-five. But this, you feel sure.
Yes.
For either, right? Okay. Do you want a motion to?
Let's hear it.
Okay? Not, not just for this portion?
Yeah, let's hear it.
Okay, okay. So the next thing I was asked to look into was to provide options on the residency policy, and I did that through the survey that I sent out, and those options are in front of you now. Just wanted to touch up briefly on why we're wanting to revisit this. It really is reducing our candidate pool. The existing policy requires that the city manager live in the city, all department heads in the county, and then it says all other employees must be either in Stanley County or contiguous, adjoining county. So what we see is we have a lot of candidates for entry-level roles even that are from out of the county, and some of these we are excellent candidates that we can't pursue. Sometimes when we're recruiting for higher-level roles and we're needing specific experience, particularly in management or high-level certifications, these more experienced candidates are settled in their areas and they're, they're not as willing to move. And there's just a decline in social trust all over, and people are not as willing to relocate, right? They're happy where they are, and a lot of times they do that based on, you know, acreage that they may have or a connection with family. So I just wanted to provide three examples really quickly that have happened recently and how this policy impacted us here at the city. Within the Alamooral Fire Department today, I wanted to make Council aware that we have two staff members, two firefighters that were hired in previous administration that are in violation of our existing residency policy. So I just wanted to make sure Council was aware of that. They do reside in Mecklenburg County today, so we have two firefighters that are in that state.
If we go to the fifty mile, will they be in compliance?
Yes, I think they will, they will. Also, in a recent recruiting process, we actually had the Charlotte Fire Chief refer some candidates to us and tell them to come to Alamooral because they were seeking a smaller city, and they wanted a great place to get some solid hands-on experience. So the Charlotte Fire Chief suggested that they come to us. So they called us up, and there were actually two candidates, and they were honorably discharged veterans, one former Marine, one former Navy, but they resided in Mecklenburg County, understood our residency requirement, and were not eligible to continue in the process. So that's a recent example from fire. Within the police department, as you know, we are down seven at this time. We are getting quite an interest that we use indeed for recruiting, and so we're getting interest from all over the place. But in the last two weeks, we had a sworn officer from a neighboring county call us and say, hey, I'm interested in your opportunity, tell me more. And the first thing they wanted to know is, can I take a car home to my, to my neighboring county? So that ended that one. Last example is within our planning department. There, we're often seeking people who have higher-level degrees, and so for our last two recruitments within planning, for a planning specialist and a senior planner, they both expressed concerns about residency requirement. They wanted to come to the area, but had significant others that were, you know, they wanted to be in the middle, so they wouldn't have fallen in with our residency requirement. So we had to move on. So I just wanted to give you those examples because they're all fairly recent. So with Council, we put out the survey, and we gave you the five options that you see there, and these are the votes that we received. Option one, one person said they were open to discussing option one, but the vote that seemed to have most interest was option four, and with that one, it says the city manager would reside within the corporate limits of the city, all department heads within the county, all other employees within fifty-mile radius. So that one did get three votes. One person also, I allowed comments and questions, one person put in the comment, I believe department heads should live within the city of Alamooral.
Any thinking you have to cover?
That's.
Ms. Hall, if you want to make a motion?
I, I just, I would rather just take, I don't want to make, I don't want to include the residency policy in my motion.
That's fine.
I just would like to go back, if you will. That's okay. To address this.
Yes.
I would like to, I would like for that to be implemented and within the rehire policy, not the residency policy.
Right.
Rehire policy, and to make it, I guess the warning would be retroactive to folks that we currently have on staff to whom this would apply.
May I clarify your retroact?
Yes, yes. No, the, the retroactive may not be the word I want to use. I think that we need to deal with whoever we have on staff currently.
Right.
That this may apply to.
Okay, going forward, so we would pay them longevity going forward?
Yes, right. Pick them up right now.
Right now, and going forward.
But, but what it does is it picks up with their longevity, right? You don't have to go back.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
But what I do want it to do is, if they are at that sick, I don't want them to go back and pick up whatever their sickness and vacation is.
Yes, yes.
But longevity, is longevity Christmas, isn't that what we do at?
First Friday in December.
So, yeah, so they would get a longevity check, but it's, right.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
That's good.
Anything to meet the five-year.
Yes.
All right, the motion by Councilmember Hall on second, my Councilmember Branson for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
I move that we adopt option four.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Branson on second, by Councilmember Patterson for the discussion. All those opposed, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Can I get further clarification on next step before we leave?
Okay.
So thank you for that, Council, I appreciate it very much. This was our policy review timeline. So those, to my knowledge, are the final two outstanding items that we had in regards to this document. I was hoping to secure final approval of the document in August in order to move forward with making it effective in September and continuing with the rollout through the city. Is Council prepared to do that, or are there other issues that we need?
I think that's what we just did.
No, 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 I think we just did those two.
Those two things.
That were outstanding.
I've studied this thing a lot since we, not fair enough, but three or four things I'd like to raise, just to see, we don't necessarily have to act on them, but I think they're worthy of consideration before we take final action. I've got one little grammar thing, permanent position shall be established in and by human resources, on page eight, that just needs to be corrected. On page twelve, we mentioned, the only human being mentioned in there by name is our lawyer. And I didn't quite get that. It seems to be that every time we change, if we change lawyers, we've got to change policy.
There should not be a name in it.
I agree.
All right.
On page eighteen, in the section on sexual harassment, the emphasis seems to be on sexual harassment by a manager on someone operating to them, and I couldn't quite figure out, finding there, sexual harassment can be one employee at the same level to another one.
Yes.
And I wanted to make sure that was, that was covered in there. I didn't, I didn't feel like it was.
Okay.
On page nineteen, on drug testing, if you take CBD, which is an acceptable over-the-counter drug, and you take a drug test, you will test positive for marijuana. And I'm not sure that, but what that ought to be covered in there, there, too.
What we tell anybody that is being asked to test is, if you're taking any type of medication or any alternative substance such as CBD, you need to disclose that when you go to the test, and, because we have that happen with existing prescribed medications. But I'm hearing several edits from Councilmember Bramble. I've gotten a sense maybe there may be some edits from, from some others or other comments.
I gave, I had a little bit of a survey that had to do with the special separation allowance, it didn't have the current state wording for the law, I just asked you to change it in the text.
Okay, there.
I've still got two or three others. On page thirty-three, where we have the longevity pay, I was questioning, if we didn't list salaries, I, I didn't know we paid longevity pay, but I'm glad we do. But when we list average salaries and that sort of, do we include longevity pay when we list the total sal?
No, sir, we do not.
We do not?
We do not.
We should, because it makes us look better. Now, we're, in section three twelve, you've got a section in there about when the work week starts, about AM and PM. I suggest you use noon and midnight, because the way I read that, and I looked up the definition of AM and PM in the American Heritage Dictionary, twelve AM is midnight, twelve PM is noon. And the way that thing is written, we either have a work week that is a week plus twelve hours, or a work week that is a week less twelve hours. So that, that can't be right, so we need to redefine that to make sure that our work week is, is a solid work week. In section three fourteen, we talk about travel away from home, when we're talking about compensation, when we do that, we have people traveling away from home, and the way I read that, it is possible that we would be expected to pay them twenty-four hours, and, and that needs to be clarified, it's exactly what we do pay when they're, they're away from home and traveling, say, for two or three days to a meeting or something.
We're going to pay them there during travel and their normally scheduled work day.
And that ought to say that.
Right.
That ought to say that. And I believe that's it.
Okay. So I'm hearing several.
I just want us to pay, and you know where I feel about smoking and tobacco.
Right.
Okay. And, and I should have asked the lady that was here last month.
Right.
But I didn't. Based on where we would like this to go.
Right.
Is this strong enough currently? That's one question, and I'm just asking that, and I should have asked her because that's what she does all the time.
Right.
Okay? Because I know where we want to go.
Sure.
And it says that this, that there is approved, prohibited except in specially designed smoking areas. And I, I guess this goes back to where I am personally, about where those are, and which is not personnel, but it's more policy, not personnel policy, but where they are and how I would like to get to, that we don't have any. Because right now, there's one right outside the front door here, or back on this third street door, and upstairs, people go out on that balcony up there, and it's horrible when you're parking in the parking lot and you go up and you smell smoke from up there. So that's not within the personnel policy, but it is policy that our personnel has to adhere to, so.
Yes, yes. And right now, I know that's one of your long-term goals for all of the existing resolution ordinance that are in effect. So we didn't move to change that as part of this revision.
Since we have all these changes, I would like somebody to make a motion that we adopt it. We have all the changes that were recommended.
So we.
Motion by Councilmember Bramble.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Hall for the discussion.[1716.94] All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Um, I'll make those revisions and get the revised document to you.
Number 11, purchase new special response team vote in fast and with reserve. Anyone have a question? I'll, I'll answer that question.
Salute.
Motion by Councilmember Bramble.
Just one question.
Sure. Second, by Councilmember Hall, please further discussion.
Um, I think what you said about the vest, the current vest we've been on expired for the special response team. About them not being able to be used for the special response team, can they be utilized for any other purpose? Um, you know, like with just regular traffic patrol?
No, sir, they're, they're too bulky.
They're too bulky.
They really restrict your movement when you're working in your normal capacity, uh, because they have plates on both sides that are very thick. So we could only use those in the entry program on the SWAT team, SRT team.
Okay, alright. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 22, consider additional measures to assist utility customers in this area.
Sure. What you've got in your, well, from the backup. Um, I'm trying to think about where we're headed now that the governor's executive order, it has expired. Um, it's, it's pretty difficult in this situation just to say there's all these protections and then as of a certain day, there's no protections or considerations for our utility customers and some of the financial hardships they may be going through. So the governor's executive order really provides a great deal of detail and protections and things we would do anyway, such as working with our customers on payment plans. So while the executive order was in place, which was maybe late March, all the way through July, anybody with an outstanding bill from that time has until the end of January to pay that bill. We're encouraging people to not wait to the end. It's, it's a bill that's not going away, but we'll work with them, try to set the payment plan, do what we can. But starting bills that come out August 1, they're not under any sort of gubernatorial protection or order. So one of the things we suggested, and we'll continue to work with our utility customers, whether they're accumulating bill under the order or after order, but one of the things we're suggesting now is to reset the amount of utility extensions each customer gets. We allow four in a 12-month period, so it's, it's rolling. They don't reset January 1 or a certain time period. You just, you can't have 12, uh, four within a 12, only four within a 12-month period. So what we would do is reset everyone essentially back to zero at this point, and then allow everyone, no matter what they've accumulated over the last 12 months, allow people to have four utility extensions as a means to provide an additional way of assisting them through, uh, you know, job loss or reduction in hours because of the coronavirus and its impact on the economy. We may have more suggestions to come, but since it expired, this was one of the first very obvious things we thought of. And Scott Hopkins, our, uh, who deals with extensions in public utilities, he can answer any questions about, the council has about how it may apply or how, how logistics of it would work, but that's our recommendation.
Counsel, your question? I'll answer that question. Can we make it effective? Hall, please.
Um, the number of customers, I think I shared, I know I shared the amount, and I think I shared a number in maybe one of my emails two weeks ago. I don't have anything more up to date. Uh, I do, I will say, from what I recall seeing and hearing, especially through electric cities, um, and what some of them were experiencing, um, it was probably at the average or possibly slightly less in terms of total amount that's passed due, but I can't tell you the number right now.
I move we approve these additional measures to assist these utility customers.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number 23, consider performance through boards and commissions. Counsel, you've got three recommendations or three boards that we're looking at tonight. And counsel, first I think means to decide, in the past you have indicated that you did not want to appoint people to multiple boards. If that's going to be your, your plan or your policy, then we have a couple here that aren't serving on other boards at this time.
ADDC particularly.
You have two of them on ADDC, that's correct. I'll start with planning against on the board, Reverend Harold McDonald, his term has expired. He is not interested in reappointment. We need to consider first alternate Chuck Horn for this thing, and moving the second alternate up to the first, and the third alternate up to the second, and then we need to fill the third alternate.
I think Chuck would be a great member of that board.
Say that again.
I think Chuck Horn would be a great member of that board.
Motion by Councilmember Patterson for Chuck Horn, second. By Councilmember Bramble, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, counsel, I need a motion to move the first and the second alternates, uh...
So moved.
Second, third up to the first and second.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, sorry. Second, by Councilmember Hall, please further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. At least you would have a vacancy on the third alternate. You received your recommendation from the staff, that is one that is on the ADDC. What's your preference?
If I could, this is an alternate position as well, so it's not quite as crucial that it would not be a regularly voting member on the board unless there's an absence, and they, or actually three absences, and they would have to move up in that case.
So we don't need to take action tonight, is counsel ready to do that?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I guess I'm advocating a little bit, but we also do need a little bit more, um, female diversity and probably some youth on these boards as well. And I think that the applicants you have before you represent that.
Your honor, I hear him saying something totally different. I'm, I mean, I understand that we've got, you know, 16,000 people here, and probably 50 of them would like to be on boards, okay? Okay, number one. And we don't need to put people on multiple boards, but I just heard Kevin say that the third alternate may not even be used in, in a regular meeting. They can attend, and they're expected to attend, but they would not be voting unless you're, unless you needed the two alternates in front of them were not there, is that correct?
Yeah, and a lot of the times with these boards, when you have alternates, we do, you would do exactly what you just did. You would, you would elevate the, uh, the, the second or the first alternate to a full-time membership once they, once there's vacancies as well. So, um, it's a good way to kind of see how things work without future female with it.
What's your wishes, counsel?
To, um, put Emily James as the third alternate.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second. By Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving into Historic Resources Commission, C5, Sheila Simpson is not eligible for reappointment. Reverend, Reverend H. Spath is Anna Christian Parky.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Sorry.
Second, by Councilmember Lauer, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. C6, Justice Jean Starz is not eligible for reappointment. Uh, we would consider Ms. Fafferty, Emily Hollis, and she has been other one to ask serve on ADDC.
Does she chair it?
She chairs ADDC.
And this would be a, this is a voting number, C6 versus planning, versus planning zoning was an alternate.
And Mr. Bramble had a, had a question on that, so if you want to state that, Mr. Bramble.
Well, one, one of those would report to the other in their jobs. Anna Christian is an employee of the library.
Of Melanie Hollis.
And Melanie Hollis is the library director. I don't know that that's okay, but I...
I don't know if it's necessarily explicitly not okay, but I can understand your concerns here too.
Yeah.
Counsel, what's your wishes? Here it now, we'll leave that to the next meeting. Parks Recreation Advisor Board, at Parks seat, Mr. Rick Johnson. It does not say that he not want to be reappointed.
I can answer that. I've been working with Lisa Kaiser on that, and I don't think, I don't know if she's here tonight or can answer. Um, she tried multiple times to get a hold of him, and she was never able to contact him, um, either in June, July, or now. So we presume that with no contact, that we...
Has there been a meeting that he has missed?
I can't answer that. I think we had attendance information.
In the last meeting.
At the last meeting.
Reason I ask, he has actually been one of the more active ones on there, I think. So I was really curious, I spoke of them, hold it open.
And the current at-large seat, your honor, I'd love to...
At-at-large seat, it's vacant.
Uh, Brian Sharp.
Brian Sharp.
Hmm.
A motion by Councilmember Hall to appoint Brian Sharp to the at-large seat that's currently vacant.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Cindy, would you try to find Rick Johnson and find out if he wishes to be reappointed or not before the next meeting? And counsel, they think it about C6 on Historic Resources Commission. Uh, come around the table quickly. Mark, this is your last meeting, and I want to give you a minute to say anything you would like to say and us to express our thanks for you, because you have come into a new position with no one ever having a position before you, and you've started a new program, a new park for the city, and we are forever grateful to you for what you did and get us going. I want to give you a minute to say some comments.
Well, I just, uh, really, you know, appreciated the opportunity to work for the city. I've really enjoyed it. I came here because of the leadership of the council and Michael. I, you know, believed what your, your dreams for the city were, and that my efforts to try to implement those, to help you with that process. I've enjoyed it a lot. Um, enjoyed working with individually, and, and with the management team, they've been very helpful, and given me a lot of insight, a lot of support. There's no way in the world I could have done it without all the support that I've received. I'm, uh, excited about retirement, and looking forward to that, with my family. We've got four grandkids now, and in fact, we had them all over at our apartment yesterday. And, um, so that's a new phase of our life that we're looking forward to. I just, again, just want to thank you all. I think the city has a bright future. We're in a good spot. Uh, we're right between two of the fastest-growing places in the United States, Raleigh and Charlotte. Right in the middle, not exactly in the middle, but right in the middle of that area, and an amazing growth area of the United States. The state, uh, highway, Interstate 85 is called the auto bond of the United States by, in Germany, because there's so many German companies located along it. Uh, and I, uh, in the article recently, in the, uh, here what the magazine was in, but it was the state, uh, the head of the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, uh, Mr. Chung, he indicated that, um, the majority of the prospects they get from the state are manufacturing, uh, from the manufacturing sector. And I know that there's some debate about that, and I certainly agree that we don't want to overlook our downtown, and I think making sure the fiber is successful here is critical to what we do. I think continuing to promote our and grow the retail industry is very important. I think we've got a good plan in place. Uh, I realize there's always, you know, issues that we've got to come up with and address, and I think that's, y'all are always thinking about those, and that's great, that you are. But I do, we do have a great opportunity here. We're really a beautiful place, you know, in the middle of the, the, uh, small mountain ranges, the Uahr Mountains, and lakes, rivers, and, you know, just a beautiful place. I think we've got a, uh, really good labor force here, and we're within a region of, of then 30 miles of about 300,000 people that, um, that are available, that could travel here to work. Uh, that's, that's just the, the state provides. Uh, so there's a large labor force that, uh, now includes working people. Not, it's not just labor force, it's a thing of, uh, they're going to come and work here. But, uh, but there is a, a little pool, maybe the better way to say that, uh, that, um, that can be drawn on to, to bring this, uh, people here to work in the industries. So, um, I think, you know, I mean, transportation, everything's, we're right in the middle of everything. It's improving, um, uh, it's, it's getting better. Uh, we've got, being next to Charlotte, we've got two and a motorports that are here. We've got a major international airport, which is really a big advantage for our area. We're, and, and we're only three hours from Deepwater Port in Wilmington. And they've done major improvements there to take advantage of the new, the widening of the pantlock and out, uh, which can now, larger ships can now come through that, and that opens up more to the Pacific region, which is a big opportunity. So we just got, I mean, I think we're, I think things are ready to happen here, and, uh, thank you for the opportunity for getting a chance to work here.
Thank you, Mark. If you don't know that, Mark is about human R.D., so he's hitting the road. And remember Friday at 2:00 to 4:00, I believe it is, we'll have a reception in the community room for, for Mark.
And one, uh, last thing, uh, one of my, one of my focuses for the rest of my life is to evangelize. And, uh, so I'm trying to figure that out. I best do that, so that will be a focus of mine.
Mark, thank you very much.
That's the incentive. We didn't vote on that.
What you said.
The incentive, did we vote on that?
While he put this, we did.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
You may accept our votes, but we did, uh...
Alright, great, then we make some comments.
Yes, sir. I will come around, pay one, let everyone comment. Go ahead, each one.
Okay. Uh, I told Mark some things at lunch today from my heart. I think he's done a superb job for us. I enjoyed working with him. Uh, but it goes beyond just our working relationship. Mark and I have been members of a dinner club for several years now, and he has one characteristic that I absolutely despise. The guy can eat 4,000 calories a day to never not gain a fan. If I eat 2,000 calories a day, I gain weight. But I guess that's all right, Mark, because we're going to issue for it, you know.
Thank you. Ms. Hall?
What are we doing here?
We're going around.
This is anything?
Anything you want to.
Um, roundup, the roundup that happened out at, um, City Lake Park on Friday night was well-attended for our first one. The threat of rain did not hold people off. Um, there were probably seven vendors out there, and the thing that thrilled me more than anything was to see families coming out, and they, in their own right, social-distanced, okay? But families came in together, they got their food, they found a place anywhere out there by the, it was interesting. I took some pictures of just families sitting and eating, and I appreciate those folks that came out. This is going to be for the next two weeks. Uh, originally, the plan was to do music and some, um, games. Parks Rick was going to do games, but then we realized that we could not have a live band on the amph, in the amphitheater with trying to still be in Phase Two, but, uh, it, it really was nice. So, um, tickled about that. And a shout-out, Ross is here, a shout-out to PD and 10th. On Friday morning, my phone was ringing off the hook saying, um, I thought it was going to be somebody fussing, and they are saying, no, we're so thrilled. That growth area right there flashing light, um, we're chief of police, he's back there. A lot of people don't make that curve, they try to straighten out that curve there at 10th and PD. Uh, but Ross, a shout-out to you, and you said to Kevin's group for really working it out to, to get that stuff cleaned out. Um, a reminder that September is pediatric cancer awareness, and ADDC last month voted to put, make the water in the fountain yellow, or gold, so if you see that in September, that's what's going on there. Um, I, I think that there's been some, um, some email back and forth about some electric stuff going on, and I think the thing that we've got to do in open session is to, is to, and someone, Michael, you can correct me if I'm wrong. When we had our electric rate approval for fiscal year 2021, we changed three things. We actually changed residential, we changed commercial, and then we basically changed on-demand. Is that correct? I mean, the demand part.
Yes, among other things, we did reduce the energy rate for small, general, uh, small, medium, and large commercials as well.
Right. And, and I think that, I know that there's been some question about some specific things that we cannot talk about, but in general, folks need to realize, we had a decrease for the, for the majority of folks, had a decrease on our electric rate. The demand is the change, as I understand it. Um, back, um, in May, you all, members of my fellow council members, helped to provide some, uh, T-shirts for the seniors at Alamo High School as a going, as a, um, a going-away gift for them, or a graduation gift for them. Alamo Middle School is in need of some, uh, I call them tool cards. They're really just tool cards, if you were scooting around with tools in them, for some of their teachers who are, don't have a real classroom, but are having to go from here to there. Whether my fellows up here know this or not, with the new, um, the way that the schools are going right now, the fifth grade students in our county are no longer going to be in the K-5 schools, they're in the middle schools. So all of our middle schools now have fifth graders in them, and because of that, they're having some room or other locations for these, some of these teachers to be. With all that said, there is a plea out to get some school or some toolbox... With all that said, there is a plea out to get some school or some toolboxes, okay, for Alamoale Middle School. I bit the dust today and went and bought what they needed, and on my Facebook page, I've got a plea out there, if anybody wants to make a donation, they can make a donation, and I'm just saying to you all, if you all want to do it individually, holler at me, and I'll tell you what, what we have purchased for them. Last thing, this is not going around the table, but I want to go back, if I can, to the appointments to boards. We put one of them off that I think we can do, if you look at the background information. Say, we have one open on HRC, there's one more open on HRC, and in looking at Salem Taylor's application, she has asked me, she said that that would be something she wanted to do. So, if we can go back to the HRC, I would just move that we appoint her to HRC, and that gets us done.
And another one that has on multiple boards.
Salem Taylor?
Yeah.
What is she on?
She's also on ADDC.
She's on ADDC? Sorry about that, I guess I didn't realize that. Well, strike that then. Um, well, right now, that's it.
I just want to also thank Mark again, like councilmember Bramble, at the ADDC meeting, we had a chance to thank him for his service on that board, but really, the benefits of ADDC and the city are the same. Anytime, you know, Mark has a difficult position, and anytime you're the first person in that position, it's even more challenging. And so, to have somebody who wants to be here, who has Mark's work ethic, integrity, and commitment, and just with his general personality, any other challenges are easy to overcome when you've got those, those combination of skills and desire. So, Mark is big, been a big benefit for the city. If you think about the reason we created that position, where we were and where we are now, you're never done with economic development, you're never finished. Where we've, you've got to keep in mind is think about where we started a few years ago when this position was created, where we are now. The city and our residents and, and people outside of the city are much better off from Mark's efforts, so I appreciate the work he's done, and I just appreciate having the opportunity to work with Mark and the way he's conducted.
Ms. Hughes.
Um, Mark, I wish you well in your journey, and I'm sure you will have some tales to tell about camping in your new RV, which seems to be the way everybody's going these days, so enjoy your time.
Mr. Roberts.
Mark, congratulations, and thank you so much for your service for our city. I appreciate all your insight, appreciate your friendship, and I wish you and your wife a long and well-preserved retirement, and spend time with your grandkids, and don't forget about just, uh, the citizens and the kids. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend. I too want to also want to congratulate Mark and wish him best wishes on his retirement. I've got to say, I'm a little jealous of you, you got that RV before me. And so, now, so long, whenever I retire. Additionally, I just want to also thank the Neil Miles brought in, to those of you that haven't had the opportunity to go out to water, sun, and the library, they've done an amazing job in renovating the library of patrons of the facility, and it looks very nice. So, to all the individuals that was involved, if you listen to this, we say thank you.
Mark, just wish you good luck. It's been a pleasure working with you, and working with you in the club and all that stuff, and your retirement can be whatever you make it. I'm sure you'll make it good. I just hope you didn't buy your RV from Cincinnati. I'm sure you're all good.
Mark, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was calling you, Ms. Allen.
Mark, I think there's anyone that works for the city of Alamoale that had the city of Alamoale in mind every thing they did. You have done that so well, I, I never believed anything other than what you would do to be for the city of Alamoale. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I need to add one thing on that.
Sure.
Before we meet again on August 8, the council meeting at 7 o'clock, in fact, on that morning, August 8, 60 graduate students will be meeting in class in downtown Alamoale.
September 8, Mr. Brown.
September 8.
Okay.
And I, I was just thinking, and I, maybe we could put together something before then. I'd like to see one heck of a crowd down there and see that first class go into that place. I'm going to be there for sure, and it would be great if we could just have a, I don't know if there's ever been anything quite like it around here.
Well, thank you. There is a town that we're not, I haven't heard whether they're going to have an open house yet or not.
I don't know.
Major Richard, didn't see you tonight, glad to have you with us. Thank you, sir.
He's hidden behind that mask.
Counsel, I was requested that we discuss at this point whether we continue with the meeting tonight or have a second meeting this week to continue with the rest of our agenda. Totally up to counsel, but I was told, well, at this point, if the last one, if the council wanted to do a second meeting, what's your wishes?
Mayor, do you know across the, how long, how much the agenda is?
I can't, I can't answer it for you. I'm going to say at least an hour and a half.
Let's meet again then.
Guys, I just, well, I think we've got to look at folk schedules of when that can be. I mean, I understand another hour and a half, but I also understand that, that the reason we do one meeting in August is because of folk schedules.
What's your wishes? Tonight or tomorrow, or is this later?
Um, I'd rather not mess up tomorrow.
I like that policy, sure.
My perp. I love Mr. Roberts' preference, Ms. Hughes.
I need my beauty sleep, but I'll, I'll hang it, I'll go tonight to not mess up.
Miss Bramble.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Ms. Hall.
Tonight or tomorrow?
We are very divided on this. I will enter a motion that we either continue, or we meet tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, and I will listen to whatever counsel agrees.
I say we continue.
Motion by councilmember Hall, second, by councilmember Lauer. All in favor, say raise your hand.
Oh, we are staying on with us.
Okay, they're all jumping up on that.
Let's give it.
I will enter a motion that we appoint Ms. Hughes as acting clerk for personnel session on our closed session.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Hall, second, by councilmember Whitfield, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I will enter a motion that we go on a closed session pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 3, 4, 5, and 6, consultant of the city attorney, Whitfield, or the city of Alamoale, Alamoale, it's Whitfield, economic development, real estate, and personnel.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second, by councilmember Whitfield, all in favor say aye.